Call our meeting to order. Ms. Dance, we have all board members present. Appreciate everybody being here. We'll begin first with the invocation from Mike Wooton and the Pledge of Allegiance for Terry Tippett.
... teach you every day to serve you, to serve this school system, dear Lord, and to have the education over our students and our parents and our faculty and staff, dear Lord, and just help them recover all the education they've learned this year, dear Lord, for your end-of-year tests and exams that they have to close out of the year, dear Lord. Just protect them and lift them up, dear Lord, and I just pray that all decisions we make in my life are pleasing on your eyes and your sons and Jesus Christ today.
Thank you, George. It's an honor and a record of the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, make a motion to enter in closed session for the pursuant to General Statute 143-31811A-136 to prevent the disclosure of confidential personnel files under General Statute 115C-321 to consider matters relating to initial employment of an individual employee and to consult with the board's attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
Okay, I accept that as a motion. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Wooton. Any discussion? All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, 7-0. Thank you. Call us back into order. You're a good-looking group. We're excited you're here. We're honored to have you here. We have a few things that we need to do before we get to our recognitions. I do want to make sure we're starting early, and I want to make sure that the people that we're recognizing, the young people, are here. Are we good with the first one? Okay. Just I'm glad we're starting early, but I don't want to leave anybody out. But before we get started, we do have a few things that we need to do. First of all, I need to move into the approval of the minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the regular session minutes of April 11th, 2023.
Some of them.
Motion by Mr. Johnson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wooton. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, 7-0. Also, the closed-minute meetings that we viewed here in closed session from April 11th, 2023, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Mr. Carroll made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, 7-0. Thank you. Now quickly for our adjustment to our agenda. Ms. Antoine, any adjustments?
I would make a motion that we add open discussion at the backside of the agenda again. This is the second month that has been removed, and there's just a few, I don't think they are controversial things, just a few things I'd like to talk about.
So I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion?
The issue I have with it, it does open us to some controversial issues, and I think the last, I remember the last time we had open discussion, it did get out of hand, so I don't know that it really serves any good purpose.
Any other discussion? If no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of adding open discussion at the end of our agenda for tonight, would you please indicate by raising your hand? Two. All those opposed, raise your hand. Five. Okay. Mr. Wooton.
Adjustments.
Mr. Tippett?
No adjustments.
Mr. Donovan?
None.
Mr. Carroll?
None.
Mr. Johnson?
None.
Okay. All right, I will turn the program over to our special recognitions, and Ms. Fur, is that who?
Let me first share with the members of our families who are here tonight. If your child is here to be recognized, do you please feel free to move around the boardroom? This is your boardroom, so you are welcome to come stand behind our board, take photos, move around wherever works best for you. We're going to call our kiddos up in individual groups, so whenever they stand up, please also feel free to take their seat, so you're not standing around. It's wonderful that we have this many kids in the room with us tonight, but make yourself at home. If you want to get a better picture, just come on back around now. And we're going to, yeah, you can come all around. The families, if they want to take pictures, they can.
All right, and as they get settled, we're going to start our meeting off tonight with students who have excelled in career and technical education competitions.
with students who have excelled in career and technical education competitions. CTE Director, Mr. Reno Palumbit, will introduce you to these outstanding students. Students, when your group name is called, please come forward and stand on either side of the podium. We'll then ask you to go around and shake hands with our Board of Education and then you'll get a special pin from me, which is on behalf of the CTE Department when you are finished. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Madam Chair Andrews, Vice Chair Tippett, members of the board, and Mrs. Coronado. It is my pleasure to bring you this evening some of our outstanding career and technical education students and teachers. We will be starting with students who placed first or second in the state competitive events of their career and technical student organization. Along with work-based learning and industry-aligned curriculum and instruction, career and technical student organizations are an integral component of high-quality CTE programs. Students practice and refine employability and career skills through application and engagement in real-world, hands-on, minds-on experiences. Many of the students we are recognizing this evening have the opportunity to advance to national-level competitions. We will start with DECA and Association for Marketing Students. Joanna Fox from Clayton High School placed first in buying and merchandising operations and research. From Smithfield-Selma High School, Judy Reese placed second in human resources management and Sherrell McDaniel, Jacqueline Garcia Uoja, and Joseph Evans placed first in innovation plan. Next, we will recognize Family and Consumer Sciences students who competed in FCC LA. From Archer Lodge Middle School, Olivia Ween and Audrina Higgs placed first in Sustainability Challenge Level 1. From Cleveland High School, Tegist Seiler placed first in entrepreneurship level 3. Lacey Morris placed second in job interview level 2. And Gia Eskamilla placed second in promote and publicize FCC LA level 3. From Clayton High School, Hayden McKinney and Madeline Fontatine placed second in National Programs in Action Level 2. Barrett Sullivan placed second in nutrition and wellness level 2. Alana Vance and Uriah Harris placed second in sustainability challenge level 2. Alina Hussein placed second in sustainability challenge level 3. And Megan Anderson placed first in teach and train level 3. From Corinth Holders High School, Haley Utteck placed first in teach and train level 2. From Innovation Academy, Elena Overton placed second in professional presentation level 1. And Petra Hegel placed second in sustainability challenge level 1. From South Johnston High School, Anna Olive placed second in fashion construction level 2. Katie Lee placed second in fashion construction level 3. Leila Salz placed first in fashion design level 3. And Audrey Dunn placed first in repurpose and redesign level 3. From Swift Creek Middle School, Kaylee Goins placed first in entrepreneurship level 1. And Kinsley Brown and Maddie Woodard placed second in event management level 1. So let's give all of our DECA and FCC LA students. And we'll need one moment to reset for the next group of students.
We appreciate all of you so very much and we're so proud of each and every one of you. Thank you for coming and sharing with us tonight.
You can probably tell at this point who our next group is. Our agricultural education students who competed and participated in FFA. So we'll start from Clayton Middle School. And students, when your school is fully complete being called, then you'll walk around and shake each of the board member's hand and you'll also be receiving a pin from Ms. Fur. So if you could raise your hand, students, when your name is called. Thank you. From Clayton Middle School, Will Hartman, Kayla Larson, Addison Walshmuth, and Natalie Dominguez Martinez placed second in middle grades Exploring Biotechnology. And Megan Valades, Kaylee Pruitt, Avery Walshmuth, and Brianna Pagan Lopez placed second in middle grades Exploring Biotechnology Quiz Bowl. From Meadow School, Ashlyn Lee, Eli Holmes, Aubrey Miller, Kaylee Young, and Kaylee Young placed second in Dairy Judging Junior. From South Johnston High School, Abigail Pelton, Jody Matthews, Kayden McLamb, Lydia Nord and Lydia Nord placed first in Farm Business Management Junior Team. And Adam Miller, Charlie Davis Renfro, Jackson Durham, Brittany Badgett, Victoria Badgett, and Sarah Holloman placed second in North Carolina Envirothon. Kimsey Bagley, Anna Wells, Nolan Doak, and Yasmeen Garcia placed second in FFA Quiz Bowl. And Morgan Simpson was elected by NCFFA to represent the state as a national delegate. Are you asked? No, you'll be fine. You'll get all the attention on you. From West Johnston High School, Ava Wood placed second in Beef Production Proficiency Award. So we would now like to bring before you, so that was our student competitors. We would now like to bring before you several career and technical educators who have been recognized for their hard work and dedication in leading their program and profession. Ms. Shirley Devone, a Family and Consumer Sciences teacher at Cleveland High School, was recognized by FCC LA with the Mentor Advisor Award. Ms. Amanda Fisher, currently a career development coordinator, but formerly a business teacher at West Johnston High School, was recognized as the North Carolina FBLA Advisor of the Year. Next, we have three outstanding CTE teachers from Corinth Holders High School. Ms. Jackie Harrell, a technology teacher, will be honored this summer at the Technology Student Association's National Leadership Conference as the TSA Advisor of the Year. Mr. Jared Parks was recognized by the North Carolina Agricultural Teachers Association as an outstanding early-career teacher with the Teachers Turn the Key Award. Our last teacher recognition is agriculture teacher, Mr. Matthew Barnhill, who was selected as our Johnston County Public Schools CTE Teacher of the Year. In their letter of recommendation, one of his administrators shared, "Students are challenged by questions that are self-designed or presented by Mr. Barnhill and then explore the answers through hands-on instruction and lab activities. Students are engaged and responsible for their own learning. This approach allows students to formulate their own questions and discover the answers through practical application. As Mr. Barnhill states, more time is focused on doing to learn than direct instruction. It's beautiful to watch." Mr. Barnhill will advance to the regional level of the North Carolina Center for the Advancement of Teachings CTE Teacher of the Year Program. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Matthew Barnhill. Lastly, on behalf of the CTE Central Services Team, I would like to thank you, the Johnston County Board of Education, for all you do to support the career and technical education program here in Johnston County. I'm now going to turn it over to Josh Plisco, District Director of Athletics, to recognize student athletes.
Hey Reno, just a point of clarity, beef production. Can you talk about that a little bit?
Yes, what would you like to know about beef production? I'd say the benefit of being a CTE Director is I'm an expert on CTE, funding, policy, and procedures and instruction. But unlike my colleagues in the core side, I'm not expected to be an expert in all of the content areas that we support. Would we have an ag teacher? So this is Dane Williford, our CTE Program Specialist, who supports agriculture and trade and industrial education.
So beef production is an SAE award, that's a supervised agriculture experience. So this is a young person that raises cows. Probably right here, it's going to be Angus beef cows and they get an award for, you know, what they do with their cows, feed and water, just taking care of them, so.
Mr. Plisco, you going to talk about some beef too?
No, I'm going to talk about a little bit of athletics, some baseball, some home runs, and you could get a beef hot dog. It might be red at one of the playoff games tonight, but you could get some here tonight. So, board, thank you for having me here tonight to recognize our athletes. Special time of year, very busy time of year. And some of the athletes that'll be recognized tonight have been named to the East-West All-Star Game to represent across the whole state, the eastern side, in their chosen sports. And for the cheerleaders, there's been a change. The cheerleaders who are here tonight, the two that are going to represent us are juniors. And very interestingly, the hope of that is that they learn leadership skills and do some of those things while in Greensboro to bring it back and be team leaders next year. So that was really a good thing that the Coach Association did and we were happy for that. Without further ado, our first cheerleader, Anna Piatek, if you want to stand up here. And to help us celebrate, Anna Piatek here tonight, her family is here. Ms. Jenna Salz is here as well, Principal Cleveland High School. She's an 11th grader. It's her second year as a varsity athlete. She's been all-region and all-state before. Her coaching comments is she's an all-around wonderful student and athlete who excels in everything she does, a beautiful flyer, an amazing tumbler, very proud of all her accomplishments and look forward to see what the future has in store for her. And we're very excited to see her come back from learning stuff at Greensboro and sharing that with her fellow cheerleaders. And she does have ambitions to be an NC State Cheerleader and we're going to support her wholeheartedly in that and best of luck to that, Anna. Our next cheerleader, Brianna Garner, could not be here today because Corinth Holders High School is preparing for the final round of the stunt competition. They made the finals at green level tomorrow. And Coach Langley, they are practicing currently right now. But we did want to let Brianna Garner know that we're very proud of her and Ms. Reynolds is here as well to support her. As an 11th grader, Bree is an incredibly hard worker who continues to improve her skills every day. Over the last two years, she's become a great main base and she has improved her tumbling technique and advanced the level of her skill each and every day. We look forward to next year, her as a senior, leading our team up in Corinth Holders. All right, let's give her a round of applause. Jay Sean's not with us today, but he'll be representing Cleveland High School football at the East-West All-Star Game. And he is no stranger. He's a two-time All-State individual, had 29 touchdowns over his career at Cleveland High School. And that's three years, so just about every ballgame he scored and every regular season game over the past three years, Cleveland did win. So he's very proud of that when we talk to him. Cleveland did win, so he's very proud of that when we talked to him, and he's a remarkable young man that'll be continuing his college and athletic career at Winston-Salem State University, and we wish him all the luck being a Ram up there, and we'll definitely support him. Clayton High School, Maddox DG Ovani, to help us celebrate him tonight for the boys' East-West All-Star Team, come on up Maddox. To help us celebrate him tonight, we have Principal Hubbard here, as well as Coach Asmussen and AD at Clayton High School, Coach is also coaching the East-West game as well, if we remember from a couple meetings ago, so very nice to see two Comets up there in Greensboro this year representing. He's a 12th grader, four-year varsity Letterman and three-year starter, three-year All-Conference Selection, two-year All-Region Selection, and Fall 2022 GNRC Defensive Player of the Year. The Coach's comments, "He's a very accomplished club player, even before entering high school, Maddox became the anchor of the Comet backline for the past three years. His ability on the field speaks for itself through all his conference and regional selections." With that being said, what I'm most proud of is his maturation as a leader and a young man who would put the needs of others before himself, and he was great to coach. His future plans are to attend Leeds-McCrave College up in the mountains and continue his soccer and academic career. Let's give a round of applause for Maddox. And then our other boy that could not be here today is in a dual-team tennis match representing North Johnston High School in the second round, Chance Davis, he wished he could have been here, but we're definitely cheering him on as he is at Green Central tonight. He was a 12th grader with 52 goals and 14 assists, Coach said he's just an unbelievable young man from up in Kenley, and we're really looking forward to seeing him in Greensboro as well. That's Mr. Chance Davis. And our last two we have for tonight are on the East-West Girls All-State Team for Girls Soccer, from Cleveland High first, Yanelli Sanchez, her parents and family are here tonight, as well as Ms. Salz to represent her from Cleveland. She had 49 goals, five assists this season, and they are still playing, they got a game tomorrow, and she might crack 50, so we're going to be cheering for her. Oh, she said this has not been updated, that was from last week, so she's at 52, she's at 52, so very good, very good. Yes, I'm glad she's counting, and I want you to email me the final at the end of the year, okay? So, Coach obviously said she's an awesome, all-around player who can do it all, a strong presence on the field. Her future plans are to attend Methodist University and play soccer, and let's give a round of applause for Yanelli. And next, we have Kaylee Pastrana here, her family's here tonight to celebrate her, as well as Coach and Athletic Director, Coach Allison Vetrul, and Principal Ms. Jenna Schwartz is here as well. She's a 12th grader Kaylee, she's been a four-year Letter Winner, four-year Captain, four-year Starter, four-year All-Conference Selection, three-year All-Regional Selection, 20 goals and 11 assists this year, to help name her to the East-West Team. Coach Vetrul's comments is, "Kaylee's knowledge of the game is incredible, her work ethic goes above and beyond, she is supportive of her teammates and helps them in every aspect of the game. She plays the game with such heart and competitiveness that is hard to match. Kaylee represents West Johnston very well and will be truly missed. We are looking forward to watching her in action at the East-West Game. She has future plans to attend Shaw University, to play soccer, and further her academic career." I'd also like to say, while I was at West Johnston, and have the privilege of knowing her family that's here today, and everything that, through everything, Kaylee, I'm very proud of you, and congratulations, and always, if you need anything, let me know. Let's give her a round of applause. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Ms. Caitlin Fur.
Now, we're going to move on to our students who are here for character education. If you're here being recognized for character education, please come stand on either side of me, and then, Parents, if you want to get their photo, please feel free to go behind the board, you are welcome to do that. And I know our first student is not here with us tonight, that is Ms. Kayla Longmire, a ninth-grade student from Choice... Yeah, stand right here, baby, you're fine, you can stand too. Stand right here, I got questions for you, don't let me forget, okay? Our first student is Ms. Kayla Longmire, a ninth-grade student at Choice Plus Academy, and she's not here with us, she says she loved and respected y'all, but she has a job interview at this time, and she won't miss it. So, I'm going to tell you a little bit about her. Dr. Choya Boykin is her principal at Choice Plus Academy, and he extended his well wishes as well, we wish her all the best in her job interview. Kayla is being recognized for demonstrating responsibility. She is a shining example of how to appropriately respond to taking responsibility for your education. She remains focused on completing her coursework to keep her on track toward graduation. She holds herself accountable by coming to school on time, attending all of her classes, and working hard daily. Kayla always responds to her teachers and fellow students in a respectful manner. She has a bright future and has proven that any student with a desire to do well in school can achieve great things with the appropriate amount of support. Next, we have Madeline Zavala, a sixth-grade student at Innovation Academy, where Ms. Crystal Gregory is Principal. Madeline is being recognized for demonstrating dependability. While she displays many of the character traits, Madeline is a great representation of what dependability is. As a sixth grader, she is a quiet leader, but it is clear that she has what it takes to shine each day. She always shows kindness towards her peers and teachers in all that she does. Madeline is always the first one to help a struggling classmate with whatever they need. She holds her friends accountable for their actions and always encourages them to be their best selves, even when content is difficult. If her classmates need extra support, she is the first one to volunteer her time to help them out. She always has a smile on her face and never lets anything bring her down. Congratulations, Madeline. Next is Ms. Alicia Anderson, a super-senior in Johnston County Career Technical and Leadership Academy, where Ms. Sheila Singleton is Principal. Alicia is being recognized for demonstrating self-discipline. Alicia came to CTLA as a shy, introverted first-year student who gradually transformed into a beautiful butterfly. Alicia never gave up, she is an asset to the CTLA family and an excellent role model for her peers. The faculty and staff treasure the moments shared with her and how she brightens any space she enters. Thanks, Alicia, for bringing the bright, being the bright light at CTLA. She graduates on May 18th and has already accepted a position to join the team at Novo Nordisk. She will continue her education at ECU, pursuing a degree in Industrial Technology while working at Novo. Congratulations, Alicia. And next is Amanda... Formasana, just like that, a senior at Johnston County Early College Academy, where Mr. Robert Daniels is Principal. Amanda is being recognized for demonstrating integrity. Mr. Daniel said Amanda is a leader in many aspects of the school framework and respected by staff and her peers. She works with the same dedication in front and behind the scene in multiple school activities. She is known for aiding students in times of need and is always available and advocating fairness for all. If one speaks of courage, Amanda stands for what is right, even if it is not the popular posture taken by others. She is full of honesty, and she goes out about her daily routine, looking for ways to help others. Congratulations, Amanda. And next is Tristan Wright, a sixth-grade student at JCPS Virtual Academy, and Mr. Wright, I got questions. Where were you going looking that sharp? You look, you know the expression, clean is a $2 bill. That's you right there, son, you look nice, I just had to tell you. Tristan is being recognized for demonstrating respect. He was nominated for this recognition by his teachers, but all of the same sentiments were echoed by his peers. This young man has displayed respect in multiple situations this school year. He is a true leader and a role model for the other students, and has maintained consistency with being a dependable and respectful student. His dependability, integrity, and responsibility have really gone above and beyond. His classmates hold him in high esteem. He respectfully ensures that his peers are treated and treat each other with fairness. He displays compassion for the thoughts and feelings of others, and it is evident in the positive relationships he has with others. Congratulations, Tristan. And next up is the, we're continuing with our new celebration, which is our PLC of the Month. These educators have been named their Professional Learning Community of the Month, and they've had a special celebration at their school sites already this week. The May Elementary PLC of the Month is the second-grade team, Glendale-Kenley Elementary. This team has had a huge turnover this year, and despite being short two teachers, they have worked extra hard to make sure everyone is on grade level, substitutes included, and are as prepared as possible for students. They work extremely hard to group students based on need, regroup frequently, and have all of the data to support their needs. Despite all of their challenges, the students are growing and are so excited for the group activities and in-class testing. This PLC is a fantastic example of putting the needs of students first. Congratulations to this team. Next is the seventh-grade Math PLC at Selma Middle. This PLC works to make sure all lessons are standards-based. They plan common assessments and discuss how to include engaging activities into each lesson. Mr. Week and Ms. McFarland work well together as a team, sharing ideas and creating resources needed for their lessons. Additionally, this PLC is very intentional in planning lessons and continuously reflects on student data to improve learning. Congratulations. And the High School PLC of the Month is the Math One PLC from Corinth Holders High School. The nomination stated, "Our Math One PLC consistently plans each and every day. They meet at lunch, use extended PLCs, and engage in daily conversations to ensure each student is receiving clear and consistent support. Our Math One team analyzes data weekly, using it to adjust instruction and meet the needs of all learners. From day one, they work to flex students and regroup classes at regular intervals based on students' data and needs. This team demonstrates shared leadership and is a true team. They all contribute to the success of the team and worked together." Let's give these educators a round of applause. And next, Ms. Linda Edmondson is going to bring you our Employees of the Month.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Bracy, and other Board members. I am delighted to be here this evening to recognize two of our valuable employees here in Johnston County Public Schools. Mr. Brian Vitrono wanted to be here tonight for this special recognition, but he's a little bit under the weather, but I am delighted to be here in his absence. First, I'd like to recognize the Classified Employee of the Month, Mr. Bill Hennett. Mr. Hennett? So, just to let you know, I've known Mr. Hennett a very long time. I worked with him way back when I was Principal at Cleveland Elementary School, he helped with multiple projects up out there at Cleveland, and when I found out I was recognizing him tonight, I could not have been more proud. So, the other thing I want to share with you before I even read these little statements about him, is that when Mr. Hennett found out that he was being recognized tonight, he wanted to know, could he bring his team to be recognized? And he had to be reminded, "Mr. Hennett, your team is very valuable, but tonight is about you." So, that just speaks to the type of character that Mr. Hennett displays. So, most people know him as Mr. Bill, but everyone knows him as a dedicated worker. Mr. Bill has no concept of doing anything halfway. He is constantly searching for new approaches to make Johnston County schools the best it can be. He takes tremendous satisfaction in not just what he does, but also in passing on his expertise to other employees. On a daily basis, he demonstrates amazing character, leadership, and heart. His commitment to making the schools the best they can be has not wavered. At the school level, Mr. Bill is an amazing employee whose communication and positive attitude allows us to better connect and understand those at facility services. Bill may be the flooring foreman, but he's so much more to Johnston County Public Schools. He's a kind soul, an artistic master, a respected mentor, and an adept teacher who is delighting customers, subordinates, peers, and leadership. Bill has been moving Johnston County Public Schools from good to great his entire career. Congratulations, Mr. Bill Hennett. Next, I'd like to recognize... Next, I have the honor of recognizing our Certified Employee of the Month, Ms. Cindy Pettigrew. Ms. Cindy Pettigrew is from North Johnston Middle School. Cindy Pettigrew is an experienced, dynamic, and passionate educator. During a 35-year career as an educator, she has spent the past 20 years at North Johnston Middle School, where she began as an exceptional children's teacher before serving as the media coordinator. As media coordinator, she collaborates with staff members and students to create a learning environment that is engaging and cut-all-the-books team to a first-place finish in the district and regional competition before advancing to the state Battle of the Books competition this month. She also serves as a teacher in our After School Jaguar Academy program to assist students in reading. As an active member of the school improvement team for many years, she provides positive feedback and seeks to be a problem solver and solution maker. She serves in other roles in the school and completes numerous tasks behind the scenes to assist administration, staff, and students. Cindy Pettigrew is deserving of the recognition of Johnston County Public Schools Employee of the Month. Congratulations, Ms. Cindy Pettigrew.
And that's the last of our special recognitions for this evening. You have in your board packet another very extensive list of events happening in our county between now and our next Board of Education meeting. One of, a couple things of note, we've had some folks ask about it already, so they can mark their calendars for our 2023 JCPS Retirement Celebration that is being planned for June 14th in this room from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m., it'll be a floating ceremony, so we hope you'll be able to come celebrate with us. And then, you also have the dates for our graduation schedule, we can faintly hear Pompan Circumstance playing in the distance, it's about that time for our students, so be sure to mark that on your calendars as well, and see if you can make it out to some of those events. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. It's great to celebrate, isn't it? It's great to celebrate the accomplishments of our young people and our teachers and staff, and we're just so grateful to all of them, and Kristin, I mean Caitlin, thank you so much for this extensive list that you've given us, it really does help to get our calendars out and make sure we're at these events. We'll move forward with our meeting again, I'd ask for updates from Chairman of Committees, and I'll start with Mr. Wooton for Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We did have a Finance Committee meeting April 27th of this past month, and Finance Committee is made up of Mr. Donovan and Mr. Tippett and I, and... And Dr. Bracy gave us a proposed budget along with the help of Mr. Stephen Britt. And I'd like to thank all the departments of the school system that contributed to Mr. Britt and compiled all the information to get this together. We got a great budget. We've got a lot of challenges and we've got a lot of priorities built into this budget. So tomorrow, we'll share the budget. We've got a special session. Is it Thursday or what? It's tomorrow at 3:00. It's an open meeting. It's a public meeting. It is here. You don't have to come. You're welcome to come here, but it's live streamed, so you can pick it up live stream on our website. So if you're available at 3:00 tomorrow, you will see the priorities of the school system and also the challenges of the school system. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll, anything from the Legal Committee?
No report.
Mr. Tippett, the Policy Committee.
There are a couple of things. Board members, you have something, you have the list on the consent items, policies, first read, second read. Just as a note, the Policy Committee meeting scheduled for Thursday has been canceled for this week. We were looking at a student code of conduct policy, and the goal was to pretty much rewrite the policy. However, what we will be doing is revising what we have, pretty much. We get some input from administrators on what we need to do. The board had a working session and met with Dr. Borkin from over at Choice Plus. There are some things there that we want to incorporate into the policy. However, we need to see how that program is going to operate next year, if it's going to operate the same, or what's going to happen. So I'll rewrite up the student code of conduct. It's not going to happen for the next school year, but there will be revision based on input from the administrators. A couple of things I do want to note for the public's interest. Excuse me. The policies, again, the policies have been on there. You see it, the new policy is a Title IX policy, and that meets the federal guidelines and things that we have to do to have a separate policy for, to address Title IX. Also, there is a new policy on first read now, especially for our public. We're adding, proposing a new level of volunteers. We have Level One volunteers, Level Two volunteers already. Level Two volunteers are able to supervise students. We're adding a Level Three volunteer, which will be, it'll be done by references, same background check. It will also have to be approved by the board. And this is the group that will do overnight chaperone things, away trips, long-term volunteers. And it's just kind of a different, another layer to try and protect our students. I know there's going to be some folks that are unhappy with that because that's going to affect some of our coaches, our band people, and all kinds of folks. But again, we're trying to get another level in there, so I encourage the public to go on and look at that, make any comments. Dr. Pierce will bring those comments to the committee. Board members, if you have any comments as well on that. But again, it's a different level, and it's going to be kind of difficult to start with and bringing all those different positions before the board for approval. But again, that's the thought process behind it, so make sure you take a look at that as well. And then the other thing I will mention is the school assignment policy. The thing that's added to our school assignment policy is that it eliminates dual enrollment for charter schools and private schools. Homeschool students will still be allowed dual enrollment in Johnston County Public Schools, but the private and charters will not be allowed anymore. And make sure you go, there's a couple of key things that I want to make sure that our public understands. Again, get your comments in. Dr. Pierce will bring them. And you can keep up with the first read, second read policies on the website.
Thank you, Mr. Tippett. Mr. Carroll, anything from the Bond Committee?
The Bond Committee is not meeting yet, but we are beginning to ramp up as Facility Services puts the next round together.
And Legislative Committee, Ms. Anton.
We had a legislative breakfast this month, and I would like to extend a very warm thank you to Ms. Dublin, Ms. Dance, and Facility Services for doing an extraordinary job, and Dr. Bracy too, for organizing and helping get that all together. It was a very well-attended event. We had a lot of General Assembly legislators there. We had, the cabinet was there. We had local commissioners that also attended. We spoke about unfunded mandates, certified staff pay, the accountability model, charter funding, SRO funding, and ESR funding. So it was kind of a robust debate. There was a lot of input from all sides. I thought it was very well done. We did not have a Legislative Committee meeting this month, and hopefully we can get one scheduled for next month. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move forward with our meeting, and then we'll come back to public comment at 6:00. Okay. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I recommend that the board approve consent items numbers one through 15.
I entertain a motion to approve these items.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Wooton, a second by Mr. Carroll. Any discussion? Oh, I'll come back to you. Sorry. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye, 7-0. Sorry, Mr. Carroll. I skipped right over you. Well, that's approved, 7-0. Mr. Carroll, we do have one advisory appointment for Westview Elementary School. Mr. Carroll?
Madam Chairman, with the board's approval, I recommend the following advisory council members to the Westview Elementary School from a three-year term from '23 through '26, and that is Carly Carter and Tina Verden. It's a motion.
I'll take that as a motion. I'll entertain a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Donovan. Any discussion? All those in favor please indicate by saying aye. Aye, 7-0. Okay, Mr. Dr. King?
Good evening, board members. CIA Department has three items tonight. One item for action. The other two items will be information items. We'll begin with the action item. That item is EC curriculum proposal. Tonight, board members, I'm excited to have Ms. Jennifer McClure, our Executive Director for Exceptional Children's, and Ms. Roxanna Wells, our Exceptional Children's Curriculum Specialist, and they will come forward and present this brief EC curriculum proposal for Extended Content Standards classes.
All right. Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chairmanwoman Andrea's, and Vice Chair Tippett, and board members. The first item that we have is the curriculum proposal for Extended Content Standards. These are students that are served primarily through our Extended Content classes and our Low Function Autism classes. I've got Ms. Wells here with me. She did a lot of legwork with this, putting this proposal together. I did something wrong. All right. So currently, we've been using the Star Fitzgerald Functional Academic Program. It is not a curriculum that we've been using, and it is primarily an assessment program. A lot of our teachers were having to bring in their own items to help assess with providing this instruction. Through that program, they were partnering with Mundo Payday, which was an online data system where they could keep their progress monitoring information and address the functional academics, but they were not addressing the actual standards. So whenever it presented itself, that they were parting ways.
I'm sorry. You're doing a great job. Is there a way we can see this on our iPad? Okay, if you give me, give us, give her five seconds. You're going to email it to us? Okay.
That's fine.
I'm sorry. It's so much easier for us to see it here than, especially those of us who are a little bit older than some of the other people in the room.
Is it possible to send it to Ms. Dance and she uploads it on eBoard?
So earlier this year, we were notified by Star Fitzgerald that Mundo Payday was no longer going to be part of that program and that they were going to charge us a rate that we decided to go ahead and look at other alternatives that would better meet the needs of our classes and our teachers. And so Ms. Wells went to work. And so she actually started by surveying our teachers about what they felt about Star Fitzgerald. Very few loved it. It is an assessment program. It does keep data. It does help when we're looking at kids. You know, are they still extended content kids? Or do they need to move to a gen curriculum? However, a lot of them feel like that they did not like it, and it didn't meet their needs. So 95% of teachers were having to incorporate additional resources into their classroom to be able to teach the standards. And these range everything from boom cards, things they bought off of Amazon, teacher-paid teachers. Some were actually using the program that we're proposing tonight, that they had gone out and purchased on their own. But there was a lot of variety in the materials that were being used in these classrooms. And so it was not continuous across the district for our classes. So we did some research, and a lot of the districts across North Carolina use the Unique Learning System, which is part of N2Y program. And the bundle that we actually looked at consists of lessons that are aligned to the Extended Content Standards in all areas, math, ELA, science, social studies, and life skills. It is a research-based program. It does have an online data management system that actually will help teachers in writing their IEP goals. They have printable and online lessons that are available for students, interactive adaptive lessons and books, online games. They have behavior support, weekly current events, so that covers part of the social studies standards as well as picture communication cards. A lot of our teachers use these communication cards, and this will actually help provide the cards that go with the lesson, so they are relevant to the lesson. This is all the different areas that they do incorporate. And with this program, you can do one area, or you can do all, a combination. And so we looked at what we felt like all of our teachers needed, which included the curriculum units for all the different areas, the weekly current events, which is called News to You, and then also the L3 Skills, which is an online resource that promotes lifelong learning with age-appropriate games and activities. It's not just a constant teaching. It's actually interactive, things that the students can do during their independent time. We also reached out to the company and asked them if they could share with us other districts within North Carolina that use this program, and this is a list of those districts. And Ms. Wells actually visited Wake County and saw it in action, as well as some of our teachers that have come from other districts were able to share the program with us as well. They shared two different quotes with us. The first one was a one-year bundle, and then they actually shared a three-year bundle, which is what we're proposing today, of $248,104.78, which includes the curriculum, the News to You, the L3 Skills, Symbol Sticks, which is the picture cards, and then Positivity, which is a behavior management program that they offer. Positivity, it's a comprehensive proactive evidence-based strategy to empower self-regulation of behaviors. And so our recommendation today is that we purchase this three-year program, including those items for all of our ECS classes in Johnston County Public Schools to be implemented at the beginning of the '23-'24 school year. This includes training for our teachers, includes all of the resources that we would need to put this in all of those classrooms. Do you have any questions?
This, this isn't.
Ms. McClure, what does the training look like for the teachers?
Right now, we have lined up potentially two different training sessions, which are scheduled to be virtual. They do offer face-to-face trainings as well.
Is this over the summer?
No, we would like to do that at the very beginning of the school year during the required workdays. We would like to do elementary as a group and middle high as a group.
And these, we've proposed them on our calendar for training on days that other teachers would be in training. Those are general ed teachers typically are in trainings that don't apply to these teachers as much.
And then myself, along with another curriculum specialist, would continue to, they continue to build support in even after training. So then we would continue to communicate with them, and if there were needs out in our district, and that's what I do. I go out and retrain and assist teachers and assess and model lessons.
Can you tell, so it sounds like Symbol Sticks, the little cards that go with this, and maybe News to You might have some paper curriculum. Or is there other paper curriculum or workbooks or anything else that comes along with this?
It's all, it's all internet-based, cloud-based. It's all printable in color. It comes in color. And even with the Symbol Sticks, they can develop their own. Like they can get a, take a picture of someone's backpack, a student's backpack, and like upload that and put the word there. And then, you know, it could be as personalized as you want it to be, as the teacher wants it to be, or they can print from the library. And also, there is a, there's a library of books that also comes along with this. There's Hamlet. There's lots of literary text. And it will bring it down. It will, the reading will come in three levels. And so there's a, there's a profile assessment that comes up front, and it can bring a text, the News to You, or a book, all the way down to almost nothing but pictures.
And that, and that again is digital, right?
It is all digital, and assessments can be given to students individually online, but the lessons and the materials can also be printed.
And do our teachers or EC teachers have enough resources to print these things and have them in their classrooms available? Because a lot of these students need that, you know, tactile, tangible things.
They would need to be printed, so whatever would needed, I mean, paper and color ink would be a need in the classrooms or in the schools.
Do the parents have access to these materials as well, such as the books or any of the digital content?
Anything that's assigned to a student in their online account, then they can do that outside of the school setting, as far as I know.
This isn't action item, so I'll entertain a motion.
I'll motion.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Donovan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Tippett. Any other discussion?
I'd propose, I don't know what the motion is exactly. I don't know if it was...
The motion would be to approve what we have here.
What the statement is on the...
It's the purchase of the three-year program, right?
Right.
For $200,000?
Forty-eight and some change.
Yeah.
I don't know if we can put a friendly amendment in there that would say that we provide printing services for the EC teachers to accommodate the tech being printed out. I don't know if there's an extra provision of printing that we can get the teachers, because I hate to, I hate to pass this and then not have them have the ability to print it out because they're limited on their copies.
Mr. Britt, we've got plenty of funds with ESR, don't we? And no teacher should have to worry about that with our current funds.
But that's standard, right? With all of our copy machine contracts that, you know, we just pay for the paper, right? Okay, so what you're saying is, is that they don't, just going into the weeds of things, this won't come out of their dedicated amount of copies that they have for their classroom. Is that what you're saying, Michelle? Okay. And are you guys saying that it won't come out of their allotted amount of copies every month?
If they need something printed, we can, we can provide that for them as well.
And honestly, after the first year in printing and laminating, there'll be a lower cost in the years to follow.
Any other discussion? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the purchase of this for three years, it's a three-year program? Okay, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the purchase of this for three years, it's a three-year program?
Yes.
Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Seven oh. Thank you.
The next item I have is for information. Adam, we hope that we have everything in place to bring this back for a vote very soon. So this is behavior support for exceptional children's classrooms. So I've shared with you just some information, some things that we've been working on for the past few months, gathering information. And basically, our FAP obligation is the IDA guarantees that every child with a disability has the right to a free and public, free appropriate public education that is provided at the public expense in conformity with an IEP. Special education provided for, in, for in the IEP, specially-designed instruction or SCI is at no cost to the parents and to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. Additionally, the Federal Register defines SCI as adapting as appropriate to the needs of an eligible child under this part, the content, methodology, or delivery of instruction to address the unique needs of a child that result from the child's disability. The FAP components that we must include that are found in the North Carolina policies govern students with disabilities or specially-designed instruction as defined in the previous slide, using research-based methods or programs to the extent practical, designed to address the unique needs of the individual child and at no cost to the families. A methodology is defined as a set of methods used in the particular area of study or activity. A methodology may be included, may include a formalized set of evidence-based practices. Examples of these could be the Early Start Denver Model, ABA, or Applied Behavior Analysis, or Structured Teaching. The IDA does not require that the IEP identify specific methodologies that the district will use. The U.S. Department of Education stated that there is nothing in IDA that requires an IEP to include specific instructional methodologies. The decision to, of whether to, whether to, a child needs specific methodology belongs to the IEP team. If the IEP team finds out that a specific instructional methods are necessary for that child to receive FAP, the IEP should specify the instructional methods in the IEP. If certain instructional methods are needed to deliver FAP, the district must provide them. On contrary to that is evidence-based practices. And evidence-based practices is what DPI actually recommends. So this, these are defined as instructional or intervention procedures or a set of procedures for which researchers have provided an acceptable level of research that shows that the practice produces positive outcomes for children, youth, and/or adults with ASD or autism spectrum disorder. The NCAEP concludes that focused intervention practices that meet certain criteria are considered evidence-based practices. And so these include discrete trial training, visual supports, video modeling, reinforcement, prompting, functional communication training. And so the National Clearhouse on Autism Evidence Practice, or the NCAEP, the National Professional Development Center on Autism Spectrum Disorder, and the National Autism Center have conducted systemic reviews to determine which practices are effective in improving positive outcomes for students with ASD. And so I have included to the North Carolina, the public, Department of Public Instruction guidance in your presentation as well, that just talks about the role of methodologies and evidence-based practices, which, where this information come from within this presentation. So the difference in these, so ABA, or Applied Behavior Analysis, is just one type of methodology that may be appropriate for a child. The goal of ABA is to improve social skills by using interventions that are based on principles of learning theory. ABA focuses on how behaviors change or how are affected by the environment as well as how the learning takes place. The term behavior refers to skills and actions needed to talk, play, and live. ABA practitioners can work with school staff and district staff, behavior specialists, program specialists, autism specialists, to determine classroom and individual student strategies to create positive classroom environment conducive to learning. Also, ABA is not autism-specific. BCBA and RBT, so we have two different individuals that can work with students to provide this service. What's the difference in these? An RBT is a peer professional who works one-on-one or in small groups with clients and their families dealing with learning behavior challenges. A RBT is required to work under the immediate supervision of a BCBA in order to collect data and carry out treatment protocols and behavior plans. The BCBA is actually a board-certified behavior analyst. And it's a professional who studies behavior of children and adults, including those with developmental disabilities, brain injuries, and/or emotional or social issues, and creates plans to improve the change or change problematic behavior. And so how do we implement this in the classroom? So teachers with the guidance of a RBT or in a BCBA team, learn to identify signals that precede the behaviors, the purpose of behaviors, understand reinforcements and consequences, modify the classroom environment to promote appropriate behavior, and review and remain open to creating a new plan. So teachers use tried and tested behavior reinforcement strategies backed by scientific data designed to promote positive behavior and to soothe negative behavior. This creates optimal learning environment for the individual student who may be exhibiting problem behaviors in the entire class. Teachers who learn how to use ABA in the classroom can see real improvements not only in the student behavior, but also in the learning outcomes. So currently, we have, we are contracted with Behavior Consultant Psychological Services out of Greenville. And they provide one BCBA that normally comes to our campuses about four to five days a month. Our current contract with them is for eighty-five thousand dollars. By no means are they able to meet all of the needs of our teachers. They work with our autism and our behavior specialists to hit some of our high needs. We did do a little bit of research. We reached out to DPI again about private provider guidance that comes to in our schools. And this is just something that they shared with us through their guidance. It's also linked in this presentation. So sometimes we do get requests for private ABA therapists to serve their patients during the school day. And there's many issues that are raised by this practice. One of those is being liability issues, so injury to the child or the provider or other people within the classroom. Equity among private therapists, so if we let an ABA in, are we going to let a private music therapist in? Are we going to let other private therapists come into the classroom? Our facility use policy that Johnson County actually has in place now prohibits visitors within the classroom during the school day to provide services. Also, potential competing behavior intervention plans in the school environment, and then background checks that we would be required to provide on the providers. Also, it has the potential to remove students from the JCPS educational program for some part of the day. The implication of educational need, which is an IEP team decision, and the school system financial obligation. And then, so also in the guidance that was provided for private providers, was they provided an example board policy. And that board policy says that the use of students' time at school by non-school-affiliated organizations to promote, implement, or execute projects with no relationship to instruction is prohibited. Diverting student time from instruction and other educational activities can be construed as violating his or her right to a least restrictive environment. The purpose of the school day for instruction and other activities related to the educational program. And that's just a sample board policy that they propose. So our recommendation is that this proposal, so this proposal is intended to add additional behavior support as part of the in-district services that Johnson County Public Schools can offer to its students. We are proposing to employ a full-time BCBA to work with the school staff, our behavior specialists, and our autism specialists to provide ongoing training for and oversee research-based and evidence-based practices in Johnson County Public Schools' classrooms, including but not limited to ABA-related strategies. We would also employ five full-time RBTs to work directly with teachers and students to assess, design, model individual and classroom-wide strategies, included but not limited to ABA-style practices that are consistent across the district. These RBTs will be available to liaise directly with the private ABA therapist as a way to help families ensure continuity between school and private services as needed. The additional staff would work with our twenty-one autism classes or forty-four extended content standards classes and our twenty serious emotional disability classes across the schools. Excuse me. So effective programming for students with autism spectrum disorder includes these items. So the IEPs are written to address the unique needs of an individual child, which may include the use of methodologies and/or EBP's and are based on data. Personnel who instruct and support students with ASD are trained in this disability and are qualified. Personnel are knowledgeable regarding content research and education of students with ASD. Personnel are trained in and apply an array of research-based methodologies and/or EBP's that address the unique needs of the individual student. And methodologies and/or EBP's are implemented with fidelity. The IEP team can articulate the rationale behind the selection and use of methodologies and/or EBP's. Are there any questions?
You were talking about a policy. Is that something that you're proposing as a policy?
I'm, I'm not proposing the policy. I'm just saying that was a sample that they provided for us in their guidance as why we wouldn't allow any private therapist to come in and do services during the day.
Currently, there's no policy against it.
No, we only have a facility use policy at this time.
This was supposed to address the parents that had concerns about, or had requested to have one-on-one. Their outside ABA therapist come in and work with their students inside the classroom. Is that right?
Yes.
And I don't see where there's any one-on-one provided in this plan.
So a one-on-one will be a decision of the IEP team. So that's not something that we, as a district office or a board can make for every student.
And could a parent put, or could the IEP team put into the IEP that they, they want? Even if it's declined, if they want a one-on-one ABA therapist brought in?
They could request it and the IEP team could discuss it, look at the data supporting it or not supporting it. And then the IEP team would make a decision.
We have a lot, we have a lot of one-to-ones still. I don't know what has changed since I was here, but we have, do we, do we still have a lot of one-to-ones throughout the county?
We do have a lot that are with students for various reasons, either medical, behavioral, or the two primary.
And if the school assigned a one-to-one, then that's, that one-to-one should be trained in ABA. If, if, I give my acronyms here. Now, what is it? Your, your BCBA?
The BCBA and RBT are people.
Right.
And ABA is a myth.
And your RB, I know that. Your RB, what is it? RBTs are just, are the five therapies. They, they would work with that one-to-one that we might have assigned to that autistic kid who needs ABA. And that, and that, and that one-to-one through the county would be offering ABA service if that was deemed...
If that was deemed, yes.
By the, by the IEP team.
Yes. And it may be that they look at different practices and it's not a...
Oh, no, I'm, I'm just trying to be clear that the one-to-ones that we already use are the way we have.
Yes, these people would work with those one-to-ones that are already in place.
Because we said teachers and training teachers and staff. I'm assuming those, those, the one-to-ones that we already have employed in the county, the ones, because, because like you said, I mean, there's lots of times the parents request one-to-one. A lot of times it's approved, lots of times it's denied. Sometimes it's for half-day, half-day, sometimes it's for more than that. And again, it depends on the service delivery model that a county uses. I mean, I don't think all counties use self-contained autistic classes anymore.
There are a lot of counties that do not have autism-specific classes.
So I think that, 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 that's, that's one of the key things. The only thing I would ask you, when you come back for the BCBA, if you could make sure that the board knows the specific certifications that person has in different behavioral modalities. And also, look, I've been there, Dan, I also said there's a lot of behavior techniques that are not certified. Because you pull from, you pull from about five of them that they work with that student. So there's different things. And I understand that. But that, that would, I would, that's, that's something that I would like to see when you, when you come back with the, with the proposal. And how exactly that, that BCBA is gonna, I have to get into your acronyms here. How that BCBA is gonna work with our, our teachers and, and, because I'm, I guess it's gonna be implemented into a behavior plan. I guess we're gonna, I guess if you, when you do the FBA and the BIP on the student, that behavior plan will include those behavior modalities, if it's ABA, if it's whatever it is.
That, also through accommodations, through a behavior goal within the IEP.
Right. And, and for, and that will also be available for our students that are in inclusion. They may need something as well as our...
And actually, with this, with this model, these people would help train teachers within the school. So it actually would be beneficial for the whole classroom.
Ms. McClure, the biggest concern for me is the on-the-ground support for the teachers.
Yes.
It's obvious that we need more help in the classrooms.
Absolutely. Right now, we currently have three behavior specialists and three autism specialists.
Right. So hiring five people to cover twenty-one autism classes, forty-four extended, standard content classes, and twenty serious emotional disability, five people is not enough. Is there plans for expansion or to get more people in?
Yes, I would like to look at the first year, see how we're going, and then determine where our expansion needs to be.
Okay. I know in the past, when we talked in our work session, we were at least going to look at some schools that did allow ABA therapists in the school. Did we do that?
Yeah, okay.
I'm Rachel Hitch. I'm an attorney from Pointer Spruill. And I, I work closely with Ms. McClure on compliance issues and things like that in special ed. And there are, let me just say this, for the board's information being completely transparent, it is not that you can't allow private providers in the classroom. That is an option. However, the, the situation is this. One, you need a policy that tells your administrators, it needs to be a board decision. So for example, hypothetically, if an issue came up and you asked me about that right now, my advice to you would be you don't have a board policy that allows it. Given that DPI tells administrators that they encourage against it, and given the liability issues that Ms. McClure has cited, from a legal perspective for the board, I would say until the board decides that they want to bear that liability, then it's not for, I wouldn't tell an administrator to go ahead and start doing that. Does that make sense? So I feel like that's a decision that a board has to make. There are some boards that may have made that decision against DPI's guidance or against advice. I think what, what Ms. McClure has structured is trying to, to meet both needs. She's trying to find a way to meet the need that is precipitating that request in a way that is at minimal exposure for the board, so that they're our employees. Now, we know they're getting, we know we're having criminal checks for them. We know that, we know that they're not marketing for a private company while they're in the classroom trying to serve a child. And I'm not saying that they all do that. I'm just saying that's a possibility because you're, you're bringing in a private company to serve kids, you know, in the classroom. So we can, we can control against some of those exposure issues that DPI raised as concerns if we hire people with the tools that we want our people to have instead of bringing it, you know, making kids accessible during the school day to their private people with the tools. Does that make sense?
It does. And I think that's what I was getting to, is your recommendation is a policy specific for the board?
My recommendation, my, I don't want to give you legal advice at the podium because I don't want to, I don't want to somehow damage your attorney-client privilege. But I think what, what Ms. McClure is looking to propose is something that acknowledges that there are benefits to ABA as one type of behavioral methodology. And that there would be benefit to your district if you had people in the district who had that expertise and those tools. But it would be better if they were your employees and not opening the doors to outside private folks coming in that exposes you to these other concerns. So it's an attempt to try to address the need that's been brought up while also addressing the concerns or the liabilities that are presented by opening the doors to a bunch of private therapists.
So just coming from a place of understanding.
Sure.
The only thing prohibiting us from doing it right now is the lack of policy. And the hurdles that I think Ms. McClure mentioned were a facility use issue and not having any type of oversight over the private employee. Yes, am I correct in saying that?
Yes. And you, you don't have a facilities use policy that prohibits it, but you have a community use of facilities, which is slightly different wording, that makes reference to when the community can use your facilities. And then you have one that's visitors. And those are your policies that are, are the two policies that are most closely aligned. I don't have them in front of me, but I think they're fifty, twenty, and fifty, thirty. And if you look at those... And in those policies, it talks about not opening the doors to private or outside community folks in a way that can disrupt the, the educational process at all. And that's a possibility because you don't know how many private providers are going to get in a classroom. And you don't know how much of the, your educational program that child might have to step away from for ABA therapy purposes. So that, those things come into play. But it is true. You could adopt a policy, and then if you, if that's the decision of this board, then I will write, I will do the best I can to protect you against those concerns. But that is an option.
And, you know, I'm going to ask, I guess Terry, because he would be the most familiar on the board with it. Is there something to be said when we have like an ABA therapist or any type of therapist? I would assume, and I could be wrong, that the... I would assume, and I could be wrong, that the familiarity with a particular therapist is part of what's most beneficial. Am I incorrect in saying that? Let's just say John Smith or Jane Doe is my therapist. You know, I may be able to bring some in with that same certification, but John Doe and Jane Smith, I have that familiarity. Am I right in assuming that? Or am I just completely incorrect? Either way?
It's, it's probably half, it's probably some of, some of both. I mean, it's a fair statement. Um, and then, and then you get to the fact is, is the, and, yeah, sh- fe- fe- feel free to chime in here. Then you get to the point where there is it the, is it the behavioral modality that's working for the student? Or is it because he knows that person that's working for the student? So, I mean, that, that's all the, that's all the things you go through. I, it's, it's, I, I can't say yes or no to that. It's, it's probably some of both. Uh, the, the question that I would have, I mean, I don't, I don't know this, personally, I don't think it's a policy issue. If, if, if Ms. McClure and, and, and Dr. King say recommend this, then certainly it, it's doable. But what, but the point is, my, my point is, is the thing that, the issue with the I, with the IEP, and then what you just said, um, i- if you're being taken away from the IEP, you can't allow that to, to not enable the student to meet the other goals on the IEP.
That then says that for potentially owing comp services.
And that, that's, that, that's, and, and it may happen, it may not happen. I'm just saying that, that's, that's one of the things that concern me. And the thing, and the thing that concerned me is, is the number of, I, I don't, I don't know how many students we're talking about.
You have over five thousand. Wasn't your head count on?
We have over six thousand EC students.
I mean, students, students that, that have requested ABA.
Oh, that requested? We've got less than five that I'm aware of. Now, I don't know how many may have requested to their IEP team that I, the school has not notified me of, but I know of about five maybe.
Right. And, and, and that's the, again, it's, and, and I believe Kirk, again, correct me if I'm wrong, because I haven't been on the front line in a while. But don't we still use private folk? We still contract with private groups for, for speech?
So, all of our speech that we contract with are considered, they contract with us, and so they go through the same, um, requirements that our actual employees go through as well.
Okay. But, but they're still considered a private, and we don't have, well, I'm getting back to the policy question you brought up, because we, we don't have a policy. You said we don't, we don't have a policy. We don't have a policy for that, because we, we use that through the, I can't remember what policy number it is, the one that we contract, third-party contract.
Sure. So, so there's, there's a distinction to be made from there. There's, there's kinda three categories that you're talking about in this whole discussion. What Ms. McClure is proposing is that you hire people that would be your staff. So, that removes some of the concerns about having somebody you don't have control over coming into the classroom. The same would be true with your, your contracted, so right now you contract for some ABA service, um, with a group out of Greenville. And that, that group would, they're, they're, they're treated as employees because you contract with them. So, as part of your contract with them, you can require them to have this kind of, um, criminal background check. You can require them to provide this level of documentation. You have control over that when they're your contractor. The third group of people that have been asked about in terms of these, of specific requests for private providers to come into the classroom, this is not our employee, not someone we contract with. It's my private therapist that I go see at night. Now, I want, I'm asking the district to provide access to that therapist to work with that student during the day for X amount of time. So, that's a third group. They're not, we have zero, we don't employ that person. They're not an agent of ours. For all intents and purposes, they're a visitor to that classroom. Um, and so, we don't have as much control over them.
Right, right. I mean, I, I understand that. And, and again, that, that was my question, because when you mentioned we don't have a policy, I mean, I know that we, I knew that we were contracting with-
Yes, yes.
-outside groups. And, and the, the thing with, the thing that, the request has been made for ABA to have your personal private, and if it, I'm, any, any personal private, it could be your, your personal tutor. It could be anything, anybody that you wanna bring in and follow that student around all day. I mean, I think if you, if you have, if you allow that, then it opens, w- w- would, would, would we be, I don't wanna say, um, would we have to, but would, would, would we be expected to, to do that for other?
That's one of the concerns-
Groups, other things.
That the DPI guidance raises is, okay, so if I, what if I come in and I say, well, music therapy is very good for my child, and I want you to make my child accessible during the day to their private music therapist? The, the question then becomes, how does the board distinguish between what therapies it deems worthy of having access to kids during the day versus ones that we, that we may not? So, that, that's just one of the issues DPI raises.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, no matter if it's an ABA therapist or music therapy, it would have to be part of the IEP, correct, for it to be, okay, so?
For us to provide it.
For us to provide it.
It's part of the IEP. Right. So, when you're talking about, can I bring in my private therapist, you're already in a situation where the team, the IEP team has met, and I don't know that it's always the case, because I can't speak to every specific individual child's IEP in your county. But presumably, if the parent thought that was necessary, they could make that request at the IEP meeting as you asked for. And the IEP team has decided that that methodology is not necessary for that child to receive an appropriate education. And, and in response to that, the parent's saying, okay, well then, will you let my person come do it, since you guys don't think it's necessary and you're not gonna provide it?
And, and I'm, I, I guess my question is, hypothet- hypothetically speaking, if you had a private person come in, and, and the IEP team said that this person needs this service, this student needs this, this service, a private person comes in, when that private, if that private person fails to show up for a day, two days, three days?
So, if the IEP team decides that that service is necessary, you're not bringing in their private therapist. The district will be responsible for that service. So, if that's what the, so if the IEP team decides on it, we, we are required to find somebody to do it. But to back up one step to something Jennifer said earlier, that I think is important to point out, is that generally speaking, you can't, all these decisions are made on individual students when you're talking about IEP team decisions. So, it's impossible to say one thing that covers everybody. But generally speaking, we decide what the child's needs are and what kind of services they need. So, we would decide that they needed behavior services, and they might need that in the form of modeling or whatever. We, it is, i- it's not impossible, but it's unusual that an IEP team would then specify what brand of behavior service was necessary.
Right. And, and so, why would a IEP, if I, if the IEP doesn't say, we need this service, can we legally bring a person, can you legally bring a person in to do that, another service?
So, what you would be doing, that would be a board decision, and that, that's really, that's the crux of the issue you're dealing with. We have already determined that the service is not necessary for the child to receive an appropriate education through the IEP team. The parent is asking us, it's really about access to the kid for the parent's private person. It'd be, you know, if you take it out of the context of ABA and make it a dentist, you know, team decides that you don't need dental work, and the parent, and, and somebody says, okay, you don't think I need it. Will you, during the school day, when my child is in your care, will you make my child available to my private dentist i- in the classroom? That's just, that's just an example. But we're all, they're, what they're really asking for at that point is whether we are willing to provide access to the student for their private service.
And, and if, okay, um, with the IEP team meets, and, and this, this happens frequently, we don't, you know that, IEP teams, a parent wants, requests something, that's denied, that parent has the due process to go to DPI-
Yes.
-and to, to the federal, um, civil, civil, whatever it is.
Yeah, they actually have, they have two routes to, to contest that decision.
Yeah. Is, is, is there a cost for doing that for the parent now?
So, it, it depends. A parent can do either of them on their own. It's frequently the case that a parent would find an attorney to do that, because the, the, there are two avenues. One would be a state complaint to the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction. That's a much less formal, much easier thing for a parent to do on their own. The second would be a due process action. That looks much more like a lawsuit, and even though they can, most parents would hire an attorney to, to do that route.
Okay. But the DPI route is typically what parents go through. That's what I always, that, that was what I always saw when, when parents didn't. Because there, there wasn't a charge for that. They could get assistance through DPI office. And DPI, it, it, you, essentially, we have the same format to look at it. But, but it would, okay. I, I was just curious if there's a charge for parents, uh, because there, there shouldn't be a charge for, there should not be a charge for a parent to question whether their kid is getting services they need or not.
Through DPI, that state complaint procedure is of no charge to parents.
Well, clarification-
You, oh.
Excuse me, for clarification, when you're talking about a IEP team, you've been using the term, we make the decision. Who is on the IEP team? Who, what consists of the IEP team, so we'll all know who has input into those decisions?
So, the IEP team includes an LEA from the schools, typically an administrator from the school, um, the special education teacher, a regular education teacher, the family, the parents, um, the student, if they are of age, and also any, um, related service personnel, speech, um, PDOT, any of those.
So, it's important that parents are involved in, in the whole process as we go along.
Yes. And there is a requirement that we consider information that the parent would bring. So, if a parent arrives at an IEP meeting and they have a private report, the IEP team is, they don't necessarily have to do what the private report says, but they are required to consider it in their decision-making. And we also have on IEP teams, somebody who is, um, capable of interpreting educational evaluation results. They often, they often are the same, that one person can occupy more than role, one, one role on the team. Yes, sir?
So, just getting back to the recommendation, your recommendation is just to go, this is just for going to go get a RFQ, request for quote.
And you're planning to bring that back to us in June? Okay.
Uh, in the agenda work session, it was requested by Ron Johnson that you bring forward another county's policy or guidance. I know Davidson County was pointed out to me by a, a parent, is using this, has used this successfully, where they've allowed private therapists into the classroom with their student to provide them the one-on-one care that they need to meet their educational goals. It's facilitating meeting the education goals. This isn't a, a separate and apart. This isn't a piano lesson. This is not a dental appointment. It is using a therapist to meet the education goals. We do have counties that have used it for over a year successfully. If we have a policy that institutes, we're already talking about a level three, a new type of guidance for overnight, um, outsiders to be with children. I can imagine a level three would also be sufficient in terms of weeding out any problems of outside providers. The, the DPI, like, I don't know if I said this or not, but the DPI has already stated their advice on this. So, a parent going and petitioning the DPI, if they're not getting the services they've asked for, doesn't seem very likely to go anywhere. It's very expensive to hire an attorney. Most parents don't have the funds to do something like that, if they can't get their child served. Uh, this is going to be, if we allowed these private services to come in, it is at no cost to the district. Typically, it is the, um, health provide, health insurance that covers that cost. So, we aren't out on, on a limb financially trying to do that. The program you brought to us that states six hundred thousand dollar ask, and we're not sure, it might be more, might be less. But in the work session, again, Mr. Britt said that there is, he can, he can find financing for a year for that. So, there's no long-term planning to make that sustainable. So, these kids might have some help for a year. That was what's said at the work session.
This money would come from the EC budget. And we have, we have researched-
Well, this is what was said at the work session, when it was brought up. Do we have long-term funding to care, to facilitate this? It was said for the first year, we do. And Mr. Britt said we could go back to the commissioners the following year to try and secure funding for that. That, that is what I heard.
For this, this.
Yeah, I recall them saying it was coming out of her funds, so I don't know.
I, I just asked where it was identified, and that was the answer I got, right or wrong. It just was the answer I got. So, I don't know that there's long-term planning. And then there was talk about expanding this program from five to ten, uh, again, at the work session. Uh, again, so you're looking at doubling that cost. And are we really serving the families that came to us with this initial request? Their request was they really want someone one-on-one. We have all kinds of vacancies inside our EC programs. I had an EC teacher reach out to me talking about, um, they haven't had a dedicated TA that is supposed to be there helping all year. They've had subs filling in. We already don't have the staff. Is this what we need to be focusing on? Do we need to be focusing on those staff positions?
The problem again with them bringing their person in is what happens if insurance gives out, and then they are without that person. If we add it to the IEP, it is our obligation by law that we provide that person.
I thought you said that we can't add it to the IEP. I'm getting mixed messages on this.
With respect, board members, I, I think I'd, I'd wanna just associate myself with the, with the statements of, of the attorney. Our, our role is to bring you the best recommendation that we can develop based on the law and what we feel like is best practice. That's what we've done here. We recognize and we respect the fact, uh, that at some point in the future, uh, maybe even this evening, this board might direct us to take a different action, right? If that were the case, and a, and a proper vote were taken, we would certainly, you know, work to implement that directive. We cannot, however, in good faith, based on the ex, based on the information that we've received from our attorneys, based on the information that we've received from DPI, come to this board and recommend, um, that we, um, implement a program like what is being used in other counties. I, we really don't know what the decision-making was in those counties. Uh, but based on all the information we have, we don't feel like it's in our, in the best interest of this school district and our students and, and our staff to make that recommendation tonight. Again, if you make that directive, if you take that vote, we will certainly move in that direction. Our job is to bring you what we believe is the best possible, uh, recommendation. And, and, and that's what we've done tonight. We are certainly glad, however, to operate as the board directs.
Thank you, Dr. King. Alex, I do appreciate you being so candid about that. Just looking, we are in the information gathering stage and the information presentation stage, so there's no action gonna be taken tonight. And we are approaching summer, and I would appreciate and humbly request that by July, we have the other side of this. And what I mean by that is, by July, that's sixty days, you've given us your recommendation or the practices and potential policy that you will believe most beneficial. However, we do have parents advocating for what they believe is best for their kids, so I would like to see the other side of it. And what I mean by the other side is, a policy that would either reflect Davidson County or whatever county. I don't wanna call a specific county out, because I don't know. But a county who does allow these private therapists, because you are correct also, and it's our decision to make. So, with that being said, you know, I know I asked for it in the pre-agenda meeting, and I know that, you know, in conversation with Chairman Andrews, it was obvious that policy was not gonna be drafted in seven days. But I'm not asking for a policy, a specific policy, in sixty days, but I'd like some framework. You know, I have no problem with bringing more resources into the district, you know, whether it be five, ten, fifteen, twenty, if those resources benefit these kids. And I don't think that any parent is gonna, you know, wave a red flag not wanting resources for their kids. But if there's something specific that parents are asking for, and we are going at length, and we are going at length. I think there's been like ten slides added since our pre-agenda board meeting. Then I wanna see six, how many, Dr. King? I didn't, I, I about to say, I didn't see these in the pre-agenda. How many? I, I, I counted about six. Yeah, they, they weren't in the pre-agenda, right? You didn't share any of the slides. But like I said, if you had time to add the slides, then I would like for someone to make time to develop the other side of this. To give me the, and I appreciate you, I appreciate you nodding your head. I do. Um, thank you. If I could get the other side of this, so I can make the decision, and the other six, I'm sure they're not gonna want to just hear one side of it and see the presentation from one side. They wanna hear your recommendation. Whereas a yin, there's a yang. We wanna see both sides of it. I don't think anyone would disagree with that.
And you'll go forward, though, and get your quotes, so that at least in, okay, yeah.
And I'll go, I'll go as far as, um, as saying, if we do have a county that would welcome us to at least see their program as far as what they would allow, I'll take the day off and go check it out. I don't mind, but I would love to see the other side of it.
This program that they have, I think this is allowing individual people.
Outside therapists.
Yeah, to see what it looks like.
But we kinda get what Kevin's, or Doc, Mr. Donovan's saying. He just wants to see it working to see what he thinks, so he can make, and that's where I'm coming from, too. I wanna see the other side of it. I would like to see how it works, and then we make the decision.
Yep. And I'm happy to do that. I wasn't elected to make the decision. Y'all were elected to make the decisions. So, if you would, if you wanna see, here's what a policy could loo- look like, here's what you, you could do, then we can lay that all out for you. I'll provide all the information that you want.
Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
And I think, I think the, the key thing is to make sure you, because you, you really can't, you can't compare other counties until you know if they have the same EC service delivery model that we have, because that, that's the key point. They may not offer EC services the same way we do, where, I mean, if they, if they allow a private person to go in, where is that? Is, is it going to regular ed class? Is it going to, um, to, to electives? Is he staying in a self-contained classroom all day? I mean, there, it's gotta be, you, you, and, and those things, I don't know. I mean, I, I have no idea. Um, so, I mean, I think that's, that's, you know, uh, I, I fear, uh, I think I'm being fair when I say that, that I, you know, I don't have a problem with, with this. If we could get that information, if, I don't, if, I don't know who's, which other counties is doing it. But if, if there's another county that, that allows a private ABA therapist, our private therapist, period, in their EC program, then, then just see what their EC, um, service, service delivery model is, um, if, if it's, because I know a lot of folks are getting away from self-contained classes. And, and, and you may have that ther- that person following that kid through the regular day, which obviously is gonna look a lot different than having a whole bunch of people in a self-contained classroom. I mean, so, you, you know, just, just to get a handle on, on, on what it, how, how they're being used, and what their limitations- being used and what their limitations are and, and, and if, if they're going through, um, the same training, the same things as their staff person, ju, just stuff like that.
We, we appreciate you bringing the information. It's exciting to me to see that your, your, um, your plan here is to bring people in with a variety of method, of, of, of knowledge on how to serve our children because obviously everybody's unique and different. And so I appreciate that. And we look forward to having you come back in June with that proposal.
Regardless of what, regardless of where this conversation goes, I mean, I like the fact that what, what you're proposing is something that I think is needed for an E C program. I, I mean, I, I think, I think that's, you know, you need those behavior therapists and, and behavior techniques for E C and regard, I mean, that's totally different than what we're talking about here. But I, I like what you're proposing for our county. I, I, and if, and if it's two separate things, it's two separate things. But I like what you're proposing. So I'm, I'm anxious, I'm anxious to hear the certifications that that person has.
Sure.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much. We're gonna, I'm gonna take a pause here for public comment. Um, we're just, um, for a public comment, if everybody's good with that. Is our crowd right here good?
What, do you take a break?
You want to take a fi, I'll hold you to five minutes. It's, it's six oh six. We will come back together. Good, everybody did pretty good coming back. Okay, welcome back. Tonight, we have ten speakers signed up for public comments. Citizens who have been signed up to address the board during the public comment session will be recognized in the order in which they signed up. Each speaker will have three minutes to present comments to the board. However, the public comment session will not exceed sixty minutes total, except by a majority vote of the board. The board suggests that specific personnel or student matters be addressed to the school principal, the Johnston County Public School System official responsible for the program or facility, or to the superintendent. Citizens who address the board shall not use language that is obscene, profane, threatening, contains fighting or inflammatory words, or otherwise disruptive to the orderly conduct of our business. Any person who willfully interrupts, disrupts, or disturbs an official meeting and who upon being directed to leave the meeting by the presiding officer willfully refuses to leave the meeting may be found guilty of a class-two misdemeanor pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one forty-three dash three eighteen dot seventeen. Our first speaker of tonight is Cara McArthur. Did I say your last name right? Close.
Yeah, close enough. Hi, um, and I apologize in advance if anything I'm saying is a little bit redundant because I know that we all just, a lot of discussion just took place.
We welcome your comments.
Um, but I wanted to follow up regarding my request and other parents' requests to have outside therapists allowed in our classrooms. Um, while I'm grateful that our E C department's getting the much-needed attention and support that it deserves, I'm hoping that you all will still consider allowing outside therapists. Um, I was able to speak with the E C director after the last board meeting when I was here and, um, go over my concerns with her. Um, but I was given a lot of the same reasons that were discussed tonight about why we can't implement this. And so there's some things I wanted to kind of clear up. Um, we are no way are asking to have A B A therapy take place in their class. We're not asking for them to be removed from the class to have their sessions. We're not asking to have additional therapies. We're strictly asking to have their therapist act as their one-to-one guide, to use the A B A techniques and apply them to help them reach their I E P goals. Um, because the fact of the matter is, uh, one-to-one aid can help these children, but when you have children that are self-harming and bashing their heads on the floor and the wall, that in and of itself is a lawsuit. And the fact that none of these children have gotten severely hurt is a blessing. And one-to-ones aren't necessarily trained in that, where these A B A therapists can recognize their triggers, de-escalate, and play offense versus defense with these kids. Because they're not going to reach their I E P goals i, if they're not in class, if they're not learning because they're self-harming or they're hurting other students. Um, you know, so many parents have removed their kids from our public school systems because their needs aren't being met. My son is currently on a modified schedule, um, where he goes to an A B A clinic twice a week to help meet his needs. And his principal and his teacher are phenomenal at helping that. But still, even after the last time I was here, a T A drug him by his feet back into his classroom. Why, he's five. Why is that allowed? Why, why is a T A grabbing my child by his ankles and pulling him into the classroom? The principal and the teacher were incredible. They rectified the situation immediately, and I'm glad that they handled it properly, but it still should never have happened. This is in addition to other things that have happened to him and many other children. It costs us nothing to do this. I don't understand why we wouldn't at least consider it on a trial basis. Or like Mr. Johnson said, let's get some data from the other districts that are already doing this. Let's see what, can we implement a trial run in our districts? We've got so many other volunteers that are allowed into our schools. Surely we can implement a policy that would abide by the privacy of the other students while helping those in need with the therapist. I mean, not every child is going to need this request. So we don't have a situation where there's fifteen adults and ten kids in the class. That's not realistic. And you heard Ms. McClure say about five families that she's aware of. We can't meet the needs of these five children. That would make a life-altering impact for them. Yeah, just, thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Brittany Aickley.
Okay. Tonight, you heard a proposal to add five behavior therapists for the entire county. While this is a start, this is the bare minimum. Yes, adding this much-needed training for the teachers, but it's also asking them to add another title to their plate. This is not an answer to our concerns as parents. The reason why we are asking for our personal therapists is because they have an established relationship with our children. My son's therapist has been with him for months. He trusts him. He has a close relationship. His therapist can see when he's starting to get upset and step in before he starts self-harming. They are providing a safe environment for him. I told you two months ago that we removed him from the school because he wasn't safe. But this therapist has been through training to specialize in safety and knows how to de-escalate, de-escalate his meltdowns before they happen. It was mentioned that allowing his personal therapist would interrupt his learning. This therapist isn't there to take him out of the class. They are there to be next to him at all times and monitor and work on his behavior. Comparing this service to a music therapist or a dentist is frankly insulting. A dentist isn't there to prevent my son from slamming his head on the wall twenty times a day. They are there to help him make an enti, make it through an entire school day, not a modified three-hour day. We've had a one-on-one for my son provided by the school. This person didn't have training. They didn't have experience with A B A. They weren't qual, a qualified individual. We're asking this request because we want the best for our children, and you should want the same thing.
Thank you so much. The next speaker is Bennett Chapman.
Hello, everyone. Uh, my name is Ben Chapman. I want to thank for the members of this board as well as the administrative staff for the work you do guiding public education. I'm the beneficiary of decades of public education here in North Carolina, and I'm truly grateful for you making it possible for educators in Johnston County to do their jobs. Uh, the reasons I've returned are the same as when I came to you in January. Uh, it is to encourage you to adopt Policy six-two-two-zero as amended, which since it was on the consent agenda, passed. So I appreciate it. Thank you. Um, I'm also here to stand up and speak up for LGBTQ youth in Johnston County and to encourage you to broadly consider proactive policy protections for transgender and non-binary students. Uh, since I last spoke here, I helped organize a small event in Smithfield on March thirty-first for the International Transgender Day of Celebration. A few dozen members of the community gathered, and we listened to some speakers talk about their experiences as transgender, non-binary, and gender non-conforming Johnstonians. We recognize that this celebration was important at this particular moment when transgender Americans are being framed as a threat to society. Uh, we wanted to reach out locally and reassure transgender people living in Johnston County that we stand by them, we support them, and that they are fully realized members of our community. Uh, these policies that you're considering today represent a good first step. But I want to encourage each of you to think about the next steps you will take. Uh, for me, the next steps would be to research of the policy adopted by Orange and Durham County in the last three years, I think each of them have, uh, that's been referred to as a gender supports policy. Uh, the detailed policy offers guidance and protections for students and staff in the LGBTQIA+ community. Uh, as members of the Board of Education in Johnston County, you have a responsibility to represent the interests of all parents and create a welcoming environment for all students. While gender-diverse people are a minority, uh, of the population, their concerns should not be ignored. Um, and we should not tolerate discrimination, bullying, and harassment. Um, but tolerance is the floor. Um, a gender support policy would make these youth feel welcome by and ten and through policy. Uh, thank you for your time, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Erica Hall.
Hello, board members. Dr. Eric Bracy. Um, I'm here as a representative of Down Home N C. We are a working-class organization, and our chapter and office are located in the heart of Smithfield. I come here tonight to thank every teacher that works for Johnston County Public Schools. As we all know, it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and each teacher should be uplifted, recognized, and celebrated for their dedication to our school system. I would also like to thank Stephen Britt for his thorough budget presentation from April twenty-seventh. There are so many challenges I want to discuss tonight, but I can't address them all in three minutes. So Mr. Britt sent me a complete Excel spreadsheet displaying the allocation of school supplies. This discretionary budget is distributed to the school administrations across Johnston County and is not limited to school supplies. So this budget has been used for furniture and equipment, software, library books, postage, travel, printing and binding fees, rentals or leases, field trip expenses, food purchases, extended summer employment stipends, athletic equipment, band equipment, and much more. So while I'm so grateful for this funding and the commitment of each principal to ensure these needs are met in fairness, some systemic problems still need to be analyzed. As I preface, I am not attacking any principal or administration. They all have a lot of responsibility to ensure their support, they support their schools as best as possible. This is a teacher's message regarding the needs for more funding to replenish classroom supplies. So as a teacher of over twenty years in Johnston County Public Schools, I've been able to see the needs of our students and teachers. I've been fortunate to have parents over the years who are willing and able to provide supplies for our kids, ranging from basic items such as paper towels and tissues to classroom supplies such as paper and pencils. Still, even with parent donations every year, I spend my own money to supplement classroom needs as well. Not all schools or teachers or, and students are as fortunate as I've been, and many are struggling just to meet basic needs. Please make changes to give us what we need and help our students be successful. So the discre, discretionary budget is practical and it's needed. However, it's saturated with much more significant purchases. So all teachers should be able to have an allotment of money each year instead of the responsibility of funds being shrouded by larger expenses in the budget. So under resource schools and the unstated expectation that educators will spend their own money on supplies and equipment will and has driven them away from their profession. So we have met with our county commissioners Butch Lauder, Patrick Harris, and Tony Roswell and discussed the upcoming budget timeline. We want to meet with Lynn and possibly the finance committee of this board to discuss this initiative further and seek a resolution to ensure that teachers are financially supported each year regarding basics. Um, and I just wanted to say again, thank you to Dr. Bracy, Mr. Britt, and the finance committee for giving out the information that they did. Um, I would be very grateful if you met with us in the future, a little bit like closer than, than later because the budget is coming up. And, um, thank you for listening to me and thanks.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Susan Wilson. Here, okay. Uh, Chris, our next speaker is Christina Arena.
Good evening, everyone. I am also from Down Home, Carolina, and I have a son in the Johnston County School District. And I also have a daughter who graduated two years early from Triple S High School, summa cum laude. So I have been a very active part of the Johnston School District for many years. Uh, I am here today to acknowledge the board's efforts while drawing attention to funding disparities. I would like to highlight the issue of certain teachers not being allocated enough funding to cover essential supplies, which is a concern that must be addressed. From talking with various principals and teachers in the district, I have found that the money teachers receive varies depending on school and principal. Some principals say they are able to give up to a hundred dollars to their teachers, but would like to be able to give more. Due to have, due to having to cover other expenses for the school, general supplies Due to having to cover other expenses for the school, general supplies aren't always the top priority. Teachers from some schools have stated that they've only received $50 for classroom supplies. It's clear that teachers and principals desperately need more funding to ensure that their students have access to the resources they need to succeed. Here are some additional points to consider. Providing an additional $350 paid directly to our teachers would make a huge difference in the quality of education that students receive. It's important to recognize that our county teachers spend their own personal funds on classroom supplies, and I would like to share some words provided to me by one of our teachers in this county. I'm a third grade, I'm a third-year teacher in Johnston County. I love my job and my students. I want them to have a safe and welcoming space to learn in. Unfortunately, like many other educators, I struggle to provide the bare necessities my students need to get through the day. I constantly have to beg and rely on donations from parents to keep my classroom stocked with snacks, facial tissues, pencils, and copy paper, which can run into hundreds of dollars every year. I spend around $700 out of pocket every year for parties, rewards, school supplies, and educational materials so my students can get their needs met. I ask you today to please consider a $350 budget given to every teacher, and that's including the EC teachers, in our county to help relieve some of the financial strain that goes along with this job. I shouldn't have to choose between filling up my gas tank and snacks for my classroom. She says, "Thank you for your time." Teachers should not have to go into debt to provide their students with the necessary learning supplies. So, we want to make sure with the commendable funding requests that there is a specific line item for essential school supplies so this issue doesn't get overlooked. You can help teachers do their best when you provide the supplies for success. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you so much. The next speaker is Elizabeth Lynn.
Hello, everyone. My name is Elizabeth Lynn. I'm a resident of Clayton, North Carolina, and I have a young son that will be attending school next year in Johnston County Public Schools. I'm representing Down Home NC and advocating for our local teachers. I completely understand the importance of providing essential supplies for the classrooms, and I commend the board for making a historical budget request to ensure that our schools are fully funded. The proposed budget includes an increase of 1.7 million for discretionary funds, and that is a step in the right direction. But it is unfortunate that many teachers still have to spend their own money and request donations from parents to ensure that students have access to basic materials. It is crucial for our education system to prioritize the needs of our teachers so that they can focus on what's important in educating our youth. And this is why I would like for you to consider, within the proposed funding increase, a specific line item of $900,000 for discretionary funds to ensure that each teacher receives $350 directly in order to provide essential supplies for the classroom. Our chapter has been out in the community and has been able to collect 400 petitions from local residents who support our teachers getting supplies through the need that they need with this additional line item. And I would like to invite all teachers and community members in support of this to our chapter's kickoff that will be at the Smith Collins Park this Thursday from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. You can come out to learn about our organization and find ways that you can support the community and our local teachers. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much.
It's 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Smith Collins Park.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Margie, is it Radeau? Radeau.
As a veteran teacher in North Carolina, I am desperately concerned about the current teacher shortage. Teaching after the pandemic has brought many challenges, including COVID learning loss, social-emotional issues, and the amount of extra paperwork and trainings piled upon teachers, including eighty-five hours added to the school year for K-5 teachers with the Letters Science of Reading training. I really think the General Assembly is labor trafficking our elementary teachers with this. How can you sign into law a mandatory training that requires eighty-five hours of time to be spent on it without giving teachers time during their working hours to complete it? Not to mention that the state is not paying teachers to complete this training. I am thankful that our school board is compensating teachers a bit for completing each unit, but it's not from the state. Teacher burnout is the highest I have seen in my twenty years in education. The Pepsic Commission's pushing the Pathways to Excellence Plan will be the last straw on the camel's back for many of your current teachers. Pathways to Excellence will become pathways to teacher exodus. Having teachers essentially compete with student test scores in order to deserve or earn a higher pay will destroy the professional learning community that our district has worked so hard to cultivate. Teachers need to work together and collaborate on best practices to enhance student learning. Several of you have responded to my emails, and I appreciate that support, and especially you supporting teacher retention and your concerns with the Pathways to Excellence Plan. We need your united voice speaking out for your teachers. Please ask the General Assembly to kiss our salary guide. Kiss it. Keep it so simple, and adjust the guide to reflect the cost of living increases. It's Teacher Appreciation Week, and I'd like to thank Dr. Bracy for treating all Johnston County teachers a special cake today. That was beautiful. Thank you for that. Very sweet of you. Also, in honor of Teacher Appreciation Week, I urge all stakeholders, parents, business leaders, to take a good look at the North Carolina Salary Guide, which is woefully stagnant. If you compare the top of the teacher's salary guide in 2008 to the top of the teacher's salary guide in 2022, it has only increased by $1,450. Only $103 per year at a snail's pace for over a fourteen-year span, and it's still $6,000 below the two bills currently introduced federally, which would make the minimum teacher's salary across our country starting at $60,000. North Carolina needs to do better. I know three amazing teachers on my second-grade team that are not coming back for the next school year. If three out of nine on my team are making this decision already, it makes me wonder how many Johnston County teachers will return with me for the next school year. Make a public statement in favor of higher pay for teachers at the state level. If Johnston County can publicly, publicly commit to a better pay scale without setting up more hoops for teachers to jump through, I know other counties will follow your lead. The time is now.
Thank you, and we do appreciate you. We do want to, again, say it is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I know the board, we so greatly appreciate the work of our staff throughout every day. Our next speaker is April Lee.
I'm following Margie, and I'm tall, so... Good evening, Dr. Bracy, Chair Andrews, Vice Chair Tippett, and board members. I'm here to speak about several things that some folks have already spoken about tonight, but it's good to hear it again and again. The first thing I want to speak to you about is the teacher responsibilities. Margie touched on this. But I've heard this over and over again, and I remember passionately speaking to you about this last year as well. I also remember being very teary sitting in the back of this boardroom as I listened to our administrative staff working in central office talk about all of the different responsibilities that were being passed to teachers, including letters training and different trainings for all kinds of programs that were coming at us, and already feeling so very, very overwhelmed as an educator. And I know that my fellow educators feel the same way. I'm asking our district to consider the workload that we are asking our teachers and of our teachers and our instructional assistants. We are asking employees to do a lot on their own time, and yes, we pay them for many things now. But our staff are sacrificing time with their own families, their own time to relax and recharge from a very stressful but highly rewarding job. I encourage administrators on all levels to treat teachers and instructional assistants and classified staff as professionals and act with empathy and understanding. Be mindful. There are districts paying for master's degrees right next door, and they also have significantly higher supplements. And when you consider those things, with the heavy workloads that we have, sometimes pay is the deciding factor. The other thing I want to talk about is that teacher supply money. So, 1.7 million divided between forty-six schools, their discretionary funds that go generally into the general fund of each school, covering costs like when you're not a Title I school, Saturday, early, and evening academy, EOG test prep materials, tutors, parent night expenses, cafeteria, classroom, library furniture replacement, library funds to purchase books because that's no longer a line item either, athletic equipment. There are all kinds of things that that money can be used for, and very often, it doesn't leave a whole lot left for classroom teachers. Usually, classroom supply money from school to school, it varies, of course, but runs anywhere from $50 to $100 per teacher and sometimes includes instructional assistance in the elementary school. But that money also includes the tax that has to be accounted for, and the purchases usually have to be made from FSI for most items, and that does not go very far. We need to designate specific funds for classroom needs so that our teachers and our instructional assistants don't have to continue paying out of pocket for classroom supplies. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our last speaker is William Worley.
Board members and Dr. Bracy, I'm here today to ask for some support and help for our school. I've been a teacher at Early College Academy for thirteen years. We are a five-year high school of close to 300 students. From the first semester of their freshman year, our students are taking a mixture of high school classes and college classes. We have no physical facilities of our own. Every high school class we teach is in a college classroom in one of the buildings on campus. It is definitely fair to say that our ability to work cooperatively with JCC is a key part of us being able to do our jobs, and this is where I'm asking for your support and your assistance. We have been struggling for several years now in three main areas: room keys, room requests, and scheduling. On April 6th, just as buses were unloading students around 10:30 a.m., we went on a full lockdown as a result of a tip that there was a student with a gun on campus. The situation turned out well in this case, but it was actually fortunate that we were not yet in our first block classes when that happened because many of us do not have the ability to lock our classrooms. Despite repeated requests through the JCC key procedure, we find it increasingly difficult to get keys for the classrooms our teachers are teaching in. As a result, we typically cannot lock our rooms in the event of a lockdown. This should not be. Each semester, we must request classrooms for the following semester. JCC sits aside only four guaranteed classrooms for our use during our 11:00 to 4:50 p.m. school day, despite the fact that we have ten classroom teachers at our school. Getting classrooms for all of our upcoming classes is increasingly difficult, and it is not at all unusual to be bumped from a room that you've been teaching in for a few weeks because someone at JCC has decided that they need the room more. We have been using a science lab in the lightly-used Elsie Building for over a decade. Our science teachers have their chemical closet in that building. They share that lab space between the two of them. This year, JCC has told us that we can no longer have that lab. We have been told that we will have to move our chemical closet to another building. In addition, JCC has told us that our two teachers and the two science teachers from CTLA will be expected to share this one lab for the semester. This should not be. Finally, we've all experienced the move to an increasing number of online classes during COVID. JCC strongly moved in that direction, meaning our students are increasingly forced to take online college classes. Our experience is that many of our students do not do well with online college classes, but it has been difficult and frustrating to try to get JCC to plan for and schedule more face-to-face classes for our students during our school day. This should not be. And this is where I ask for your help. We need an advocate. We need a voice from high enough up the JCPS food chain that the folks at JCC will listen and make some changes. We have, as a system, hundreds, maybe thousands of students from JCPS to JCC. It would seem as though we are good for their business. We just need them to be good for our business. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the information. That concludes our public comment. We appreciate each of you who took time out to come and share with us. I will ask Dr. King, if I could, to come back up, and I believe he has one more item of information.
Thank you, ma'am. A few weeks ago, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction shared some statewide data relative to early literacy, and that is data that speaks to the work that is done within the outcomes of the work that we do primarily with our kindergarten through second-grade students. As you all know, that work is critical as it sets the tone for the ability of those students to become literate citizens. So, in response to the state's release of early literacy data, we thought this would be a good opportunity to share our district's early literacy data and also take an opportunity to share with the board and the community some of the structures and strategies that we use to support the learning of our youngest learners as it relates to literacy. So, this evening, Ms. Anna Keikendahl, our Curriculum and Instruction Officer, will share information about our early literacy outcome for 2022, 2023 thus far.
Good evening, board members and Dr. Bracy. As Dr. King said, I have the distinguished privilege to go over some really exciting data points with you all tonight. So, in Johnston County Public Schools, we are making great strides in increasing the literacy proficiency levels of our youngest learners. We use the Science of Reading approach, which focuses on the five different components of phonemic awareness, phonics, vocabulary, fluency, and comprehension. With the support of the Johnston County Public Schools Boards of Education, we have adopted three robust curriculum at the elementary level that have allowed us to focus on what we know to be of critical importance to our youngest learners when it comes to the Science of Reading. You'll see on our first slide, we showcase our first curriculum, which is HMH Intereading. And this curriculum is used specifically to increase reading comprehension and writing through building proficiency in language comprehension by way of vocabulary, background knowledge, language structures, verbal reasoning, and literacy knowledge. The audience for this particular curriculum is K-5 students. The state of North Carolina and Johnston County Public Schools utilize M-Class, which is a universal screener that measures the development of the reading skills of all students in grades K-3 through the DIBELS assessment. These two graphs show the overall composite scores for kindergarten, first, second, and third-grade students. Excuse me. The first graph compares our middle-of-year scores from the 2021-22 school year to our current middle-of-year scores. The second graph that you see shows our progress this school year from the beginning of year to middle of year. And you can see in all instances, there is an increase of students who are at grade level, which is shown in green, and students who are above grade level, which is shown in blue. So, that is quite an achievement. Our second curriculum that we want to look at is Foundations, and that curriculum is what we chose to increase reading comprehension through building proficiency in word recognition through phonics and fluency. The first graph, again, compares our middle-of-year scores from last year to our middle-of-the-year scores from this year. And the second graph right beside it shows our progress this school year from the beginning of year to the middle of the year. And again, you can see in all instances, there is an increase of students who are at grade level, again in green, and who are above grade level, which, again, is in blue. And finally, our third curriculum that we wanted to showcase is HEGARDY. HEGARDY is the curriculum that's used to increase proficiency in phonemic awareness in pre-K, kindergarten, and first grade. Also, Johnston County Public Schools has decided to use HEGARDY for the two past years in second grade as an adjustment to core instruction based on the data that we've accrued. And these data sets show the specific data collected around that phoneme segmentation scores in M-Class, which is, again, what HEGARDY curriculum specifically targets. So, as before, in all instances, there is an increase of students who are at grade level and who are above grade level. You can also see in this particular data set the dramatic increase in proficiency from the beginning of the year for this school year to the middle of the year. Another early literacy support that you all have supported is the hiring of elementary learning facilitators for this current school year. is the hiring of elementary learning facilitators for this current school year and for next school year. These elementary learning facilitators are assigned to two to three elementary schools throughout the district and visit each assigned school site one to two times per week. These learning facilitators have been instrumental in the implementation of these literacy curricula. They have provided P D sessions, they have co-taught lessons, they have provided non-evaluative feedback for teachers, and have undergone extensive professional learning so that they have a firm grasp of each one of these curricula and how they should be implemented with fidelity in the classroom. Because their singular focus is to help teachers improve their classroom practice, their impact can really be seen in this data as well. And finally, here's the data to which Dr. King alluded. You can see Johnston County Public Schools versus North Carolina early literacy data. And this data set really shows that we are right on pace with the state of North Carolina data for our beginning-of-year data. Matter of fact, at the beginning of the school year, you can see our kindergarten learners were actually four percentage points below the state in terms of kindergarten readiness. But in just a few short months, Johnston County Public School staff has caught up and our kindergarten data increased by thirty percentage points. What a celebration, especially for Teacher Appreciation Week, our teachers and all instructional staff, our administrators, everybody. This is such a boon to to all of them, working together as a team. And you can also see for first through third grade, we have outpaced the state in our middle-of-year data. In first grade, we are two percentage points higher than the state. In second grade, we're two percentage points higher than the state, and in third grade, we are four percentage points higher than the state. Because of our focus on utilizing those curricular resources that adhere to the science of reading, we've been able to instruct our youngest learners in the most effective of ways. And finally, I wanted to make you all aware of an exciting opportunity to support our young learners as they continue to grow in their literacy proficiency. As you know, we're having Reading Camp this summer, and we're instituting a Reading Buddies Program, wherein adults are invited to listen to children read to help build student fluency and comprehension. If you are available to help or to support, we would love to have you. And of course, the specific information on how to register, sign up, including the dates and the times and the locations are in that link right there. Thank you.
Any questions? It's good to celebrate.
It is.
And it is a great reason to celebrate. Any discussion? Thank you so much. Uh, Dr. Pierce, I believe it's you.
All right.
We have information in our folder about this, don't we?
It should be linked to your presentation.
Okay.
And you should have a handout in your folder as well. Yes. All right, board members, I want to go ahead and let you know that we have learned that the best way to communicate anything is to let everybody hear at one time. So we are starting a recording again right now. And this exact recording is what will be shared with all of our classified employees about this proposal so that everyone hears the exact same proposal, just so you all know how we're going to communicate this out. So we have received feedback from our instructional assistance group. We have received feedback from our driver-onlies. We have received feedback from administrators. We've received feedback from board members. We've received feedback from parents. And we all know that the one thing that is the biggest thorn in our rear end is what? Bus drivers, right? And so we have tried our very best to put forth and look at all of our options. And so before we get started, it has been an unbelievable job that our transportation department, that our teacher assistants, that our school nutrition assistants, that our office staff, that our driver-onlies have done to get us to where we are to date this year. Every single day, you've got people up early that are subbing, you know, that are just pulling off, getting our kids to school. And so what we're going to propose to you tonight is looking at some data and looking at a way to potentially restructure our current transportation proposal and process here so that we can get rid, and I hate to say it that way, but so we can get rid of that policy of duty to drive. And so just for some information upfront, we currently have two hundred and fifty-three total buses rolling every day, thirty thousand three hundred and twenty-nine miles. That is one thousand seventy, seventy-six runs, forty-three midday and a hundred and fifty-four E C runs, and three hundred and seventy-four total employees helping us do that every single day. I think it's interesting and that we need to share. It seems like a little over a year ago, I stood in this podium. We were somewhere around the eighty mark of driver-onlies. We went to a seventeen fifty an hour model for driver-onlies. And if you look up there today, we have a hundred and forty-seven driver-onlies. We learned something through that process, and I'm going to share that today with you. We learned several things. One is that money did make a difference, okay? Two, what we learned is, is that if you pay one person to drive a bus a certain rate, you should pay everybody to drive a bus a certain rate, and I think we should admit that. And then I think the third thing that we found through this process is, is that there are more people willing to drive a bus than we actually realize if you give them a choice versus if you make them do it. And there's one last thing that I want to share. We also learned that we have one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine staff members that are being required to drive a bus. And we only need somewhere around four hundred staff members to pull off driving buses. So we are putting another seven hundred employees cramming up our bus classes that we're not able to get people in who want to drive, and so that's, we're causing ourselves some problems. So with all that said, I want to be as transparent as I can be. This is the policy that we're all hoping that we can come back in this boardroom and have a cake for it as well to say this thing is gone. And so this is our duty-to-drive policy. It was, it's been in place for a long, long time. If you remember back August first of two thousand twenty-two, when we did the driver-only plan, we went back and our intent was that we'd get enough driver-onlies, that we would only need a few dual employees. And today, what I'm coming with you is, is that we did a new survey. And what we learned is there's a lot of people who are dual employees who said, "Do not take my bus away from me." Don't take my bus away from me. And so we did a survey in early March. We received five hundred and twenty-one responses. And just so you remember, we sent the survey out to one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine employees each time that you see this. We received five hundred and twenty-one responses. Two hundred and forty-four of the staff that responded do not drive or monitor a bus currently. So just so you know, noticed there, there were two hundred that are drivers that filled it out, seventy-seven that are monitors, and two hundred and forty-four that don't drive a bus at all. We, we really wanted to try to figure out what is, what is the issues with the bus? Why do you not want to drive a bus? And that was one of the questions that we had never asked before. And it was, it was some interesting info that we got back. One was size of the bus was one reason that people didn't want to drive. Bus discipline was a concern. The length of their day was shared. Missing class time, a lot of TAs, instructional assistants, other employees that are driving buses are having to leave before the school day's over with students, and then lack of childcare was, was an area that was shared as well. So then we asked another question. If given the option, would you choose to drive an A M. route, P M. route, A M., P M., monitor, monitor an A M. P M., or opt to drive, not to drive? And as you see overwhelmingly on the first survey, a hundred and fifty-five employees said they would opt out out of the ones who completed. They don't want to drive at all. You see that most of them, then, the remainder wanted to drive in the morning, and then you see so on thirty-one in the afternoon, and then drive A M. and A, at P M. There was thirty that responded in the survey that would love to do A M. and P M. routes. So I'm going to tell you, we got that survey and said, "This doesn't help us much." So we put out another survey. And in full transparency, we put this survey out the Wednesday before spring break, all right? We all know it was not great timing, but we were trying our best to push and crunch numbers so we could get to this point. On that survey, we received four hundred and twenty-six responses of the same one thousand one hundred and eighty-nine that we put out. And the purpose of this survey was to see if staff would be interested in driving based on potential incentive packages. And so for lack of better words, if the money's there, if you pay to drive a bus, could we see if you're interested in driving? A hundred and eighty people that filled it out said that they either drove or were monitored currently. A hundred and seventy-nine were drivers and sixty-seven were monitors. And so in front of you in your packet, because I knew you wouldn't be able to see this, and on the slide, you'll see some of the options, and it's, it's a heavy read. It was different options based on financial payment. So if you worked a forty-hour week and you got this hourly rate, this is what you can make, and then we incentivize that. And I'll get into a few more of those pieces. And then they also had the option to option out. "I don't want to drive. I don't care how much money you put in front of me. I don't care what the, what options I get to choose. I don't want to drive a bus." So this slide references what the staff said that completed that second survey. So we had a hundred and seventy-two instructional assistants that said after that second survey that these are the things they would be willing to do. They would be willing to be driver-onlies or be dual-role A M., dual-role P M. We had office support. Twenty-one staff filled out said they would be willing. Thirty school nutrition and two custodians for a total of two hundred and twenty-five staff on our second survey said they'd be willing to help drive. And so when we got this survey, I don't mind telling you, we looked at it and went, are we seeing, we only got four hundred and some odd people responding, but are we seeing enough to drive? And so here's the next slide, and I don't mind telling you, we have studied this slide. I've shared this slide with, with the bean counter. I've shared it with everyone to say, "What are we missing?" We've talked to H R. We, we, when we got this slide and looked at it, if you, if you look by area, and that's where we dug down even further. If you look by area, the Clayton area, the Cleveland area, the Corinth area, when the people that those instructional assistants, school nutrition assistants, custodians, office people, how they responded by the areas they work in. If you look across Clayton, we currently don't have enough to drive buses in the morning, and based on this, we'd have a surplus of people to drive our buses in the Clayton area. We would not have enough in the afternoon currently based on the ones that presented this. And, and you see all the way down. So A M. drivers, people that were interested, P M. drivers, people that were interested on the survey, and then the number of buses we have that we need during those areas is that third column. And then you see our, the green means that's where we have a surplus, and then the P M. is where we have the negative. Now, I'm going to go ahead and tell you, I hope that I can stand up here one day and tell you we have a surplus of drivers. I may never get to say that again. But based on this survey, with only four hundred and twenty-six, I think, shared with you responded, we have people who said they were willing to do it with the incentive packages that were put in front of them at the time. We also are looking at restructuring by having just a monitor position. So you don't have to have a C D Ls, but if you want to help monitor on buses, and so we did that survey as well. That is something we feel like we're going to need to communicate better with our staff because they've never seen that role in our district. They always think to be a monitor, you had to have a C D Ls. So if they understand they don't have to have a C D L to do that role, there may be more interest. But at the end of the day, we did still end up having a negative. We need forty-six monitors a day. These are on our exceptional touring buses, and we still had a shortage of twenty-five in the A M. and thirty-two in the afternoon. But that is the data that came from that. And then last but not least, in this proposal, we would have a sub pool of drivers. And based on the data we've done, this is the number of subs we would need in each area every day if we were fully staffed and the model was carried out. We'd need about forty-one subs in our district to carry out our buses every day. And based on the first run of this survey, which we didn't give a lot of information, just said, "Here's the money. What you think about it?" Not really what it would mean if you were a sub. We ended up with thirty, less, you know, we, we need thirty-two more staff to pull that off. So we're here today to make a proposal to reverse the hiring process. Currently, we hire staff to do school-based jobs and then say, "You have to drive." What we want to do is say, "Do you want to drive?" And then, "What job would you like to do in our schools?" And package it so that you sign, you, you signed up to drive. And that way, that's what they want to do. We're not putting people on buses who don't want to be on buses. We would offer a set number of positions based on the buses needed. You saw the slide before where it said Clayton, Cleveland, certain number of buses needed in each area. And we will pay the drivers at a higher hourly rate and add a monthly safety and attendance bonus. And if we could, can we click on that link that says pay there real quick? So part of the recommendation is, oh, Lord, I'm sorry. Hopefully, you can click on it on your device. But part of that, part of that is, is that we are looking at doing a driver-only. Can you see it on your device? Okay. And so the, and the other thing, just so you know, when we did driver-only, it was seventeen fifty if you worked zero years or if you worked thirty years. And so now we have an actual pay scale where you would start out at eighteen twenty-six an hour, and it would go through. If you were doing a dual-role job, it would be eighteen twenty-six an hour. That means you would get that for driving the bus and for your teacher assistant or custodian or school nutrition. If you were just going to be a monitor, what the rate is, and then our hourly T A. rate, which that's an increase from where we currently are now as well. That is based on a four point two five percent state pay increase. And Mr. Britt, have I missed any key points in that? Okay. What I do want to share that I think is very important, to pull this off, we must absorb this by taking away forty-five of our vacant teacher-assisted positions, okay? That's in instructional assistance. And just so you know, we currently have a hundred and ninety-five vacant instructional-assisted positions. So no one would lose their job. We've, we've had these vacant for years, and what we actually would hope would happen with this is by absorbing those, we'd fill all the rest of them so we wouldn't have, because then you could hire people that doesn't want to drive a bus. That is how this is being paid for, and I want to be as transparent as I can in that process. If we can go back to the slides. Staff would be eligible for a monthly attendance and safety bonus. We would pay a hundred and fifty dollars for the A M. or a hundred and fifty dollars for A M. and P M. for three hundred dollars if you drove both. So you could get up to three hundred dollars or a hundred and fifty based on perfect attendance and no accidents. And then to jumpstart this, to show how much we really want to get out of this policy, we would offer a one-time sign-on and retention bonus for people to fill these positions of twenty-five hundred dollars. We would pay it monthly during the upcoming school year. And so once the positions are filled and we can see we can sustain this model, we would ask for you all to remove policy seventy-four forty-five. I do think it's important to share the other side, to share the risk. And, you know, with a smaller driver pool, we've seen this in other districts, okay? There are situations when you have less people that can drive buses, and you get a sickness, a flu, a COVID, or something that happens, you end up with buses sitting because you didn't have a, a larger driver pool. You know, schools are going to have to be flexible with their staff hours. And what I mean by that is, as we match up a position with a school, so let's say there's a person that works at an elementary school and they want to work, they work at the front desk, and they want to work A M. We're going to have to work with the principal and say, "Okay, so can they come and work the front desk starting at nine A M.?" Can we work that out and let them work longer in the afternoon? Okay, if you've got somebody can cover the seven o'clock, the two hours until nine A M., so we can make this happen. It may be that a teacher assistant wants to do it, and instead of getting one teacher-assisted allotment, you get two halftime allotments. You know what I'm saying? So one of them's going to work four hours as a T A. and drive a bus, and then you get another four-hour T A. and a bus. So they still get a full, but they might get it in two four-hour increments, and I want to make sure that's out there. And when positions of drivers become vacant, we're going to have to rehire them as drivers first because that's a driver that we're losing and then match it with a dual position. And, and I like, I want to put this last bullet in. I don't know if we're going to have to do this because the next steps are really going to solidify if we do. But we may need to require all staff, and what I mean by all staff, our classified, school-based classified staff, to remain to be a dual employee as far as monitors until we find out if there's people interested in doing that position, because we've got to pull off and have monitors on those buses. So it may be that we need to require that until we find out if this process... They don't need a C D L to do that. No, sir. So next steps. With your approval, we will start by sending an interest survey to all school-based staff. We will then contact the current drivers to do a commitment letter and sign up for the positions by area. And so if you're currently driving, we want to give you the first opportunity at these, at the incentive packages that are there. We would then open up remaining positions to staff in the district based on years of employment with Johnston County Schools, and then we would also start advertising for vacant positions. You would see our buses and things all over the road again advertising. And it is our hope to have this finalized by the end of June, if not sooner. I do want to share one last thing before questions. I, I have another... It's not on there. It doesn't seem like. I have another slide. It is. Okay. I have another slide that talks about bell times. And to pull off the plan you've seen, to change the bell times for those schools will allow us to park another ten to twelve buses, okay? And it only changes their school start times as little as ten minutes in the morning for elementary, five minutes in the afternoon for, in the afternoon for elementary, fifteen in the middle for morning middle, and P M. twenty-five minutes for the middle schools. Those school principals have been contacted, and then they will be the last schools that are not on our true staggered bell. The principals share with me that most of them are very, very excited because it puts their elementary riding with just elementary and their middle riding just with middle, which helps with bus discipline.
And that is something that's completely sustainable. I don't know what factors you took into consideration when formulating that change in schedule, but I just want, that is completely sustainable based on enrollment and geography and everything, correct?
Sir.
Okay.
All right. And the staggered bell was for the Four Oaks Elementary Middle, Benson Elementary Middle. And the staggered bell was for the Four Oaks Elementary, Middle Benson Elementary, Middle?
Uh, I don't have it directly in front of me.
It's in yellow on our sheet.
It's the one on, in yellow, yes.
Was Meadow included?
Uh, no, Meadow is not included in that list. You should have Four Oaks Elementary, Four Oaks Middle, Benson Elementary, and Benson Middle.
Right. They're in yellow.
Yes.
And that's the changes.
I think that, Dr. Pierce, I think the only thing, as I said, we discussed it when we were in the finance committee, that the biggest concern I have is the forty-five TA positions that we are potentially losing. However, I understand we don't, we don't have those filled anyway. And I think just so we all understand, and, and as, as it was explained, those, those are going to be looked at, and if, if we need those, and if we can hire those during the next school year, I think we have funding, um, from some funds to do that for the next school year. And then, and then we'll look at budget needs the following school year to keep those positions. Is that...
We're going to talk about a slide tomorrow if this were this year. So it's one of the...
Is, i- if, if schools need or principals need those TA positions, one of those forty-five positions, they're still, we can still make them available um, in, in the future.
Next year.
Right. Because, I mean, we're, we're not, I mean, we're not going to fill them this year. I mean, I mean, it's not going to happen this year. If we had, you know, a hundred and ninety-seven vacancies, I mean, it's, but, but, so we're, while we're using those forty-five positions, we can still make, we're going to, we can still make those available if they're needed in the future, is my, was my understanding.
Next year.
About, yeah, next year. I, I got, free time, Dr. Bracy. I got you. I got you.
That would be a, a new budget, right, Dr. Bracy?
How, how, we, um, I, I didn't get the last number. You've given it to us before, but, uh, we only need four hundred and what drivers?
So with, with this, with this plan, we would be going forward and, and that's a, that's a sliding scale, just so you know.
I understand.
With this plan, we would go down and only need two hundred and forty-two buses with the change of times. And if you look at two hundred and forty-two buses, you could do that with two hundred and forty-two drivers of AM and PM, or you go at four hundred and eighty-four, um, if one drove just AM, one drove just PM.
And you already have a hundred and forty-seven full-time.
Correct.
So you really, you're looking at possibly ninety, only ninety-five.
Uh, correct, yeah. So based on the scale here...
That would be AM and PM, which a lot of them don't do.
Right. But based on the incentive packages, as you see, uh, this could be, uh, life-changing financially for people that are having to work two and three jobs already.
Right. It's a significant increase. Um, but also, when you look at the fact that we have eleven hundred and eighty-nine individuals that work in our school system that we require, we require to drive a bus, if we can, like you said, target just the ones, just get the ones who drive the bus, look how, that's when you're going to fill your positions. You, you're going, you know, you have a better opportunity to, to hire more people who just want to come serve as teacher assistants in our school system, you know, which is wonderful, because that's what we need.
And I, and I guess, Mr. Britt, financially, the risk is now you're no longer required to drive a bus. People could be interested in being just teacher assistants only and not having to do both. Not worried about it for twenty-three, twenty-four, because we could cover it, because we're still living in that S R world. But after that, it could get interesting, in a good way. That's a good problem to have. I'm going to ask you something I already know the answer to, but PRC twenty-seven, you still going to max that out, correct? Okay, all right. PRC twenty-seven, for everybody at home, is a teacher assistant allotment from the state.
And do you have a, a minimum, a maximum number of subs? If we have...
So forty-one is what we are, uh, hoping for. Um, and I think, I think we're, right now, we're looking at putting out forty-five of those positions. Um, just knowing that they're, they're taking that job, um, knowing that they're probably going to drive every day. And so we'll probably just say, "Show up." You know, "Show up, be ready to drive."
Are these sub-drivers aware of the new iPad and all the new software for the turn-by-turn?
They would, they, they may not be yet, but they would be, yes.
It's to be advertised.
Yes, yeah. What Mr. Donovan's talking about is, uh, we now have turn-by-turn. We, it's not a Waze device, but it's basically having GPS in your bus, and we're soon to have Scott, uh, scan on, scan off, uh, for our parents. And we'll present all that information once that's up and going for our parents. It, it's possible, but I think we're really wanting to try to get subs by area so they drive the same routes. Yeah.
Madam Chair, would I make a motion? We approve this so we can have a robust discussion.
Second.
Okay, I have a, a motion by Mr. Carroll and a second by Mr. Woodton. I don't know what's coming, but any discussion? Any other discussion?
I believe that this is going to help, um, with employee morale. I think we have suffered tremendously under the current policy, and I think this is a, a very good step in the right direction.
Any other? Appreciate your hard work to get this together, and Mr. Watson too.
Watson.
Thank you. And all, all of your staff, I'm sure there was a, it was a group effort to get this information and the survey information back.
This, this is very good work. Thank you all for trying to come up with something that will solve a years, years, years problem we've had in this county. Thank you.
And we look forward to the day where we can take that policy out. I tell you, no other discussion. I'll ask for the vote. All those in favor of, um, this recommendation by Dr. Pierce, would you please indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Seven-oh. Thank you. Okay, with no further business, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Uh, motion by Mr. Woodton, second by Mr. Carroll. All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much. Thank all of you.